Thirty-seven on Monday, March eleventh, two thousand nineteen, and we're gonna call the school committee meeting to order. First item on our agenda is the consent agenda. Did everybody get a chance to review, and if so, can you make a motion to approve, please?
Yeah, I'll make the motion to approve.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Any discussion, any questions?
Well, I just had something out, Adam, on one of the items that he was gonna look into. I don't think it's gonna hold us from...
On one of the warrants?
Yeah.
Okay. If it's important to you, we can table it.
No, I don't think it's gonna change anything. It just...
It's not gonna, yeah, since it's a warrant. Okay, so with that, Deanne, do you have anything? All good? Okay. All in favor to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. So, just for the camera, we're missing two of our members. They got stuck at work, but they're gonna be joining us hopefully as soon as they can. Because our agenda is loaded, we just wanted to start our meeting and get going. Alright, the second, do we have any visitors? Okay. Alright, so let's start with our student representatives' report. Hello?
Hi. Um, so I'll start with the middle school. So in the middle school, coming up is a spring luau. And I, I'm not entirely sure what day it's taking place, but I know it's on a Friday.
What is spring?
A spring luau. It's like a dance for the seventh and eighth graders. I know that they've not had trouble in the past with them, but have had a harder time having like adults supervise, so they are making this one a little smaller than typical. Usually they invite the freshman class as well, but this time they're just gonna do seventh and eighth and kinda hope it goes smoother. Um, starting on the eighteenth are spring sports, um, so that includes lacrosse, softball, baseball, and now, uh, boys JV volleyball. So, signups have taken place, and now, um, Ms. Jordan is just waiting for everyone to register. She's had to keep pushing the deadline back 'cause nobody's doing it, but hopefully, people start doing it.
Is girls volleyball the same?
Um, so that's played in the fall, and boys are in the spring.
So they split the boys and girls? That must be a reason for it.
I think it's just so they don't have to share the gym, but I don't know if that's the only reason.
Well, that's good thinking, probably this one is, right?
Um, as mentioned before, the next door is the winter like, uh, sports banquet that's taking place in the high school right now, so usually there's a banquet for every season. NHS tomorrow has a field trip to Springfield College on like a leadership program. So I'm, I'm not sure exactly what it is. I don't think even the advisors are really sure, but we're going there and learning just about being a good leader. So that is tomorrow. We have brought back, the high school has brought back students of the month. So we pick one student, or the faculty picks one student from seventh grade, eighth grade, and then one to represent the high school. And I apologize for not knowing the people that were picked last names, but in seventh grade, a young gentleman named Chris was nominated, and he won. Um, in eighth grade, it was a guy named Brady, and he was the winner, and then for the high school was Edric Cusumo, which I feel like most of you probably know. So those are the three winners, and they, they are for February, so they're not for March, they're for February. So I'm not entirely sure when they're gonna announce March, or if they do it at the end, but I'm pretty sure teachers nominate them, and then they, they pick the winners based off that.
Teachers pick the winners?
Yeah.
Alright, cool. Well, congratulations to them. That's good.
Um, what's going on in the ninth, tenth, and eleventh grades, starting, I wanna say today, was the nominations for like, uh, class president, vice president, secretaries, and treasurers, and the new members of student council. So you pick five members from each grade, so they'll take over starting next year and replace everybody. Seniors don't have to do that anymore, 'cause obviously, we're getting out.
You're beyond it, man.
Yes, thankfully. Um, and in student council, right now, we finished up pep rally. We kind of like did an eval- evaluation of how we like think we would change it, and, um, like things we would change with pep rally. Uh, there's been talk about, um, saying if you would do like a pep rally before April break, or, um, whether they would do that or not. I know we've done it in the past, so, um, that's going on, and then Teacher Appreciation Week is the next thing that we're planning. But that is not till much later, so we kinda just plan really early. And then, we're also doing new nominations as well, so when, um, the new members get selected from the grade student council, they'll come in, and then we'll do like our own nominations for president, vice president, and secretaries of student council. And that's also when we vote for like the next representative will come to these meetings. So that will be soon as well.
That's cool. You said it as if you're looking forward not to...
No, I'm, I'm fine coming to these. Um, so I know when, when we did it last time, we kinda just write down who we want to do it. It wasn't really like, uh, like you can run, but then if like nobody's gonna be, kinda just pick, and that's for like all the categories as a whole, not just school representative.
Cool.
And I wanna say that's it. I don't think there's anything big I missed.
No, when you said nine, nine through eleven, I thought you had a s- special category for seniors, no?
No, seniors just get to hang in and watch everybody win or lose.
Alright, that's good, that's...
It's better than being the winner or loser, so...
Uh, the, the, the visit to Springfield College, NHS, um, as much as we don't know what it is, you said it's about leadership?
Yep.
Is it possible next time for someone from any, are you?
Yes, I am in NHS.
Can you bring something back?
Sure.
What it is, what you guys learned, so that we can, okay, we can find out too. That would be great.
Yeah, it's all I know is that it's leadership. That's all the advisor has told me.
Okay.
And that, it's like, we don't know if it's like students working together, or if somebody's just kinda speaking at us about it. We were told to wear sneakers, so I'm assuming we're going to be active and part of it, yes.
Yeah, yeah, let us know how it goes, uh, you know.
And we, we did not do it last year, so this is the first year, well, since I've been in NHS anyway, that we've been doing it.
Nothing else?
I don't think so.
Any questions for Jasmine? No? Alright. When is, uh, when are the year-end activities for the high school? Is there cotillion, or is it already done?
I know that prom, cotillion is over. Um, that happened, I wanna say December second, or first, it was a Saturday, and prom is gonna be May fourth.
May fourth. That's an important day, alright?
I guess.
For Star Wars fans, but, you know, that's... Alright, well, thanks a lot Jasmine.
Yeah, no problem.
Thank you for all the updates.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll see you next time with that.
Yeah.
And everything else that you may have. If you wanna stay, I think there are some good stuff, uh, tonight that we're gonna be talking about. You're always, yeah, welcome to stay as long as you want. Uh, if you need to leave, feel free.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Cool. Alright, so we're gonna, uh, table the ARSAK ASAC.
Yes.
That's good. So we're gonna move to new business, uh, to our technology audit report. Hello?
Hello.
How are ya?
Good.
I'm assuming you're Jeff?
I am Jeff.
Hi Jeff, how are ya?
Um, let me get this started here. I should've asked you before, um, what's your pleasure? I tend to stand and gesticulate around a PowerPoint presentation or s- around slides. But if that is a problem with the video and you'd rather, great.
Didn't you say you prefer folks to write on the board and, you know, it wasn't you, okay?
Pop up here in a second. So, um... There we go. I have, uh, I think we've also provided, um, a copy of the full report, um, so you've already gotten that. You're not gonna be tested on it, so I'm not gonna make the assumption that you, you've read the entire thing. But the, uh, this, this presentation is really gonna try to hit the high points, um, and not necessarily go through every single thing that's in the report. One thing that, um, you know, I definitely, I'm, I'm use, I'm not just checking my phone. I'm using this as the clicker, so, there we go. At the conclusion of this, uh, I mean, hopefully we'll have plenty of time for, for questions. Um, I know you've got a packed agenda, so we'll, you know, naturally also have to kind of, you know, make good progress here. But, um, I'm more than happy to take questions later on. Cheryl and the leadership, um, group have had a, um, presentation. In fact, we spoke about this for about three hours, um, last week. So, um, there's ample opportunities to get more questions answered and those kinds of things. But I was, um, forewarned that, um, this is a board that really likes its data and probably really wants to drill down on some things. We may not have time to drill down on too much stuff tonight, but as I'm saying, you know, feel free to, to give me a call and we can talk more about it.
Okay.
'Cause I love data and can go on and on. And, this thing's supposed to... The old-fashioned way. Okay, so, um, this is me, and obviously, um, you can, um, get ahold of me, um, at, uh, email or by phone. Uh, my firm is based in North Chelmsford, um, so for, if you don't know North Chelmsford, it's, um, right outside of Lowell, okay? Um, we work all over the country, all over the state. Uh, we've done this kind of work for quite a few school districts, um, in Massachusetts and, and all over the place, really. So, I'm bringing that, um, experience to, to bear on Granby as well. Um, we work exclusively with school districts, um, schools, um, mostly public schools, although we do work with some independent schools as well, um, and informal educational organizations, and those would be things like museums and libraries and those sorts of things. We have a really neat project right now where, um, kids in Boston Public Schools are learning how to, um, the, use GIS data, and, um, are, uh, working with the Leventhal Map Center at, uh, Boston Public Library. So, you know, those are the kinds of things we evaluate, as well as, um, the kinds of things that we've done here with you guys. So, the organization basically of, uh, what this report is about and how we went about doing our work, is, we attempted to address this question here, which is about the extent that, um, digital learning supports Granby Public School teachers and students in meeting curricular and learning objectives, okay? That was the, the sort of primary focus of what we set out to, to study. And, uh, so part of that, and, uh, the, sort of the major thrust of that, is to take a look at how digital learning in the district aligns with, um, and I've always kinda struggled on the best term to use for this, research-based best practice. And, um, that is research-based best practice that is exhibited in schools in Massachusetts and around the country. So, that is a kinda sort of roundabout way of saying, are the things that are happening here in Granby, um, are they aligned with what school districts everywhere, basically, um, are attempting to use di- digital learning or technology for? Okay, now, um, we always are careful to note that, um, every s- uh, school, every community, um, really deserves and usually wants to have their own take on, um, uh, their own practice and put their own emphasis on what it is that they're doing. And that is perfectly acceptable, but people always wanna know, well, you know, who's doing it well? Um, you know, what's happening that we ought to be doing as well, okay? So we're trying to bring that to the table also. Okay, and, um, then of course, there's recommendations that come out of that. Because basically what we did, and I'll go into this in a little more detail in a second, um, we've taken a look at, um, uh, what is happening here in Granby, and we've aligned that with what we feel is, is the research-based best practice, or what the research says that, um, people ought to be doing with technology in the learning environment. And then we come up with a series of recommendations, um, and we'll talk in more detail about those recommendations when we get to that point. And once again, you've already seen these things, because you've read the report. Okay, so, um, the process, uh, real quickly, is we did data collection in January and February. Um, this is a s- much smaller district than many that we work with, so we were able to be quite efficient about, um, getting in here and, and collecting data and essentially doing this project very quickly. I mean, you'll recall when you approved the funding for this, I think it was in December. So, uh, we were in, in January, um, doing the data collection. And, uh, we developed the findings, recommendations, we re- reviewed these with the district leadership team, um, just last week, and then, um, refined those, and, uh, that gives rise to the presentation that you're seeing right now. Okay, so, before going into what it is that we actually found, let me try to kinda set the context a little bit about, um, what it is that we were looking for and how, you know, how does technology ideally best support teaching and learning? Um, most folks are shooting for, and, and probably the easiest way to explain this, is for something that is colloquially, um, referred to as twenty-first century learning, okay? Um, and what does twenty-first century learning mean? We'll just get these up here. Learning and innovation skills, the so-called four Cs, and that would be, um, creativity, collaboration, communication, and, uh, critical thinking, okay? Life and career skills, um, and this is all of the stuff that I'm sure you've spent other time talking about, um, things like flexibility, self-direction, social-emotional learning, and those sorts of things. And then, of course, digital literacy and technology skills. But one of the things that I would wanna emphasize is that twenty-first century learning isn't about technology per se. Certainly, this is a piece of it, but the piece that, in fact, actually, I like to emphasize when we get to that category, is the digital literacy skills. And digital literacy skills, um, are less about how to use a computer, but more around how do you know, um, that the information that you're finding is good information? So it's actually, in fact, applying some of these four Cs to, um, information in general. Information which, in two thousand nineteen, is primarily collected by, I'm looking around the room here to see if there's a set of Encyclopedia Britannica, um, and there probably isn't, okay? Or if it is, it's hiding someplace. I mean, when I went to school, first and foremost, front and center in the library was the, you know, World Book and Encyclopedia Britannica and so on and so forth. And we know that information doesn't really come that way anymore, okay, for a whole variety of reasons. But if you're looking for information online, how do you know that this is good information? How do you go about finding good information, and that's your digital literacy skills, okay? So, this is basically what you're shooting for. You're shooting for, as we're gonna ramp back around, um, to be able to, to acquire twenty-first century learning within the context of using digital, um, technologies, but you're shooting for this regardless. It may have nothing to do with technology, all of your curriculum, and your instruction is largely aligned at getting towards these kinds of things. This is, even though many people have issues with tests and so on and so forth, this is still basically, um, where the state is moving, where the nation is moving, okay? Now, in addition to this, um, the, the question might be, okay, so if you're trying to get to this twenty-first century learning, what kinds of things are you actually looking for in the classroom, or kinds of things are you looking for students to, to be doing that would support that kind of learning, alright? And here, we'll just throw these up as quickly as we can, we're looking for active, engaged learning, student-centered, personalized learning. Um, this is very important, authentic, meaningful work and real-world problem-solving. So that is, for example, in, uh, just a quick off-the-top-of-my-head example, when you're working in science, rather than just sort of doing these, these abstract problems, like when I was doing physics or biology or something like that, physics, let's say. When I was in high school, we had lots of problems about trains passing on tracks, okay? Well, even in nineteen seventy-eight, we didn't have that many trains, um, uh, passing on tracks, um, but it was an abstract problem, okay? That was what, you know, how you taught physics. Now you're going to do things within the context, and I could ask you, um, of sustainability. You're gonna be looking at, um, energy supply. You're gonna be doing a lot more applied learning, okay? As a way to, to teach some of these basic concepts, okay? So that's authentic and meaningful work. And of course, emphasis on higher-order thinking skills and learning how to learn, okay? Because the bottom line is, is that it doesn't matter how many facts you learn or, or, um, content that you master. For people who are eighteen, much less people who are fifty, sixty, forty, whatever, we don't know what we're gonna be doing twenty years from now, okay? You definitely don't know what these kids, sorry, um, what students who are, um, leaving your system right now, this year, are gonna be doing by the time they're our age, okay? So, lifelong learning, higher-order thinking skills, learning how to learn, it is a critical piece. So, we wanna be looking for kids doing those kinds of things, okay? So, how does twenty-first century, or how does technology support twenty-first century learning? There's two frameworks or models that, um, we can talk about here that I'm gonna put up very quickly, that we'll spend a little more time dealing with. And this, all of this, by the way, is in the report, and there's more detail on it there. But there's two frameworks that we can look at. One is one that teachers everywhere are very familiar with, something called Bloom's Taxonomy, which takes, um, thinking skills and process and learning tasks, and organizes them essentially sequentially in almost a pyramid, like, uh, the food pyramid, in a different context. Um, and we'll look at an example of that in a second, but basically, that's a way of saying, okay, well, there's some things that you might do within the learning environment that are sort of lower-order skills, but are foundational and important, and then you can work your way up to those higher-order skills, okay? And then, this is a model that people are somewhat less familiar with, although people in my work do a lot of, uh, work with this, which is a model called SAMR, and it's an acronym. It stands for Substitution, Augmentation, Modification, and Redefinition, okay? SAMR framework is a way of looking at instructional tasks, things that go on in classrooms, okay? And in this particular instance, we're gonna be talking about digital learning tasks or technology-related tasks, and looking at the, the substance of the task, and as to whether it's something that, um, really essentially redefines learning, or something that is very substitution-oriented at the other end of the spectrum, which is basically using technology to do something that you could just as well have done without the technology, okay? So, with those two things in mind, we'll take a look at SAMR first. Once again, I'm not gonna go into great detail about this. This is in your, in the full report. But this takes something as basic as the use of Google and Google Classroom, and organizes it around this, this SAMR framework, okay? So, for example, in the substitution level, okay, how does, how is Google used to support substitution? Well, as it says, your teachers and students use Google Drive or apps to essentially replace the traditional paper tasks, okay? So, here, you could just as well have told kids, use a typewriter to type this paper, and they'd say, what? Um, or you could say, you know, here's a piece of paper, and, you know, write it, um, pen and paper, or use Microsoft Word, or, hey, we've got Google Classroom, okay? So, use Google Drive, Google Docs. That's the substitution task, okay? And, moving on up here, let's look at modification, okay? Teachers and students use Google Drive and extensions to collaborate and share feedback and differentiate assignments, okay? What's actually happening here, and we will get to this in terms of what it is that we solve, is that this is the beginning of Google Classroom, okay? Google Docs is a word processor. It's a word processor in the cloud, but it's a word processor, okay? Google Classroom is the teacher using the Google's, um, environment to really, um, manage how he or she allocates tasks to students, organizes the word in the class so that students can look at that work, collaborate with each other, collaborate with the teacher, share and create collaborative, if I keep using that term, um, uh, materials and documents, okay? Collaborate, one of the four Cs, okay? You don't have to do this with Google Docs, or, uh, in the Google environment. You could just use Google and do this, alright? So, there is a continuum here of how the technology is used to support, um, higher-order skills. These two things are important down here as well, okay? Categorically, when people look at SAMR, they talk about, um, substitution and augmentation as basically enhancing learning, okay? But when you start to do these things, modification and redefinition, you're actually transforming learning, okay? So this is pointing out the fact that technology, instructional technology, something in this case like Google, but you can apply the same kinds of things that we do to the devices that students use, to, um, various other software applications and programs that they use, um, assessment tools and so on and so forth. Um, you can use them to truly drive and transform instruction, okay? Now, hold this up against Bloom's Taxonomy, and I talked about the pyramid again for a second. Very quickly, these lower-order skills down here, okay? This is the kind of stuff that everybody's familiar with in instruction, okay? Learn this material, memorize these things, remember these dates, okay? A little bit higher up, okay, so now you, you've remembered that something important happened on July fourth, seventeen seventy-six. What happened on July fourth, seventeen seventy-six, okay? But as you work your way up here into what are more higher-order skills, you're taking this knowledge that was created down here or, or mastered at the bottom, and you're actually doing more with it, okay? You're learning how to analyze information, okay? That's critical thinking, so that's one of those Cs as well, ultimately evaluating information and materials. And then, at the top of the pyramid, is actually creating knowledge yourself, okay? So, if we take these two things and compare them with each other, line them up, they do line up, okay? The low-order things in Bloom's basically line up with these lower, um, uh, uses in SAMR, okay? And as you, you move on up SAMR, so that you're not just, for example, using your, um, uh, Google environment to, as a word processor, to create files, but you're actually doing things like learning how to collaborate around the use of the Google environment in the cloud. You're moving higher up in Bloom's, okay? And you're generating those higher-order thinking skills. We're not gonna go back to the slide, but once again, if the goal is twenty-first century learning, then, bottom line, could've said this a second ago, is that you wanna be up here, okay? You wanna be doing these trans- transformative practices. You wanna be working at the higher-order levels of Bloom's, alright? So, that, that is the context against which we looked at what it is that we saw in the classroom, okay? Believe it or not, um, this framework, which sounds very, well, depending on your orientation, very kind of ed-schooly or so on and so forth, this really does form the lens for us looking at things like, do kids have the right kind of equipment in order to be able to do things? Are teachers using the, the software environment that they have in a way to be able to do some of these higher-order skills, okay? But what we really wanna make sure is because we're educators coming in to do this work, they were not just sort of saying, you know, get this computer because it's better. You know, why is it better? Why would they say something like that? I have no vested interest in people using one kind of machine versus another, okay? But we want people to be using the technology that actually enables them to do more and to achieve something education. So, what did we find? Okay, so here, in this building, I mean, it goes without saying, this is a very strong technology environment, okay? So just in terms of infrastructure, you've got these things, okay? You've got two of them right here in this room. You know, I think there's one of these in the junior, senior high school, okay? Um, we all know about the Chromebooks. We know about the document cameras that everybody has, um, the, you know, just really nice facilities here, okay? Once again, there's much more detail about this in the report. In terms of what folks are doing, though, with this, we find that student and teacher technology use is mostly in the, the substitution and augmentation levels of SAMR, okay? Hopefully, this is not, you know, sort of an earth-shattering, um, conclusion or finding. I mean, you basically, I think, probably do know to a large extent what's happening with it, um, there. And we'll go into why, and that gets into the recommendations in a little bit before we're done here, but essentially, um, we see people, um, uh, using a lot of Google for, uh, typing up papers, okay? Um, that's largely what students are doing with it. They're not doing the collaboration. They're not really creating much information right now other than typing papers, okay? Um, they are, particularly as you get to the upper grade levels over here, um, they're looking things up online, okay? Is there a lot of, of analysis of the information that they're looking up? Is there a lot of critical thinking behind it? Not so much, okay, but they are, in fact, actually. They're not, you know, nobody's saying, where's Britannica, okay? They're, they're going to Google and they're finding information. Teachers are mostly projecting things. Okay? So they're using these devices to show videos and to, I mean, when I was in school, we had the Bell &amp; Howell 60-nanometer projector. Now you've got YouTube. Okay? But it's a similar kind of thing in that people are projecting and showing materials. Okay? Just to keep moving here over to junior, senior high school, I think, once again, this is not a major revelation. You have a relatively weak technology environment. In fact, I think that we would say, based on our experience with other schools, and certainly holding it relative to this building, which, as nice as it is in terms of infrastructure, this is not the Taj Mahal of technology. Okay? The state's actually pretty good nowadays about not letting people build Taj Mahals. So you've got here what the state feels is adequate and good and solid and reasonable for a elementary school, basically, to have. Okay? What you have over at the junior, senior high school is definitely below adequate. Okay? That's not slamming what's there because, as, you know, I would go into greater detail if there was more time, I would say that, you know, tremendous work has happened to make the best out of what it is that you have, but you don't have much. Now, the interesting thing, though, is that the data shows, and we've got the graphs and the, you know, the surveys and so on and so forth, and our observations, just as much, teacher and student technology use is also mostly at the substitution and augmentation level over there. Okay? And I don't think that that is just because, well, this is only been here for a school year and people haven't quite figured out how to do it yet. Okay? People are, well, we'll get to this in the recommendations, you know, there's not the professional development, there're not the supports, there're not the kinds of things that people actually need to be able to do more. You know, this is a bit of a glass half-full, glass half-empty kind of thing. I don't think anybody here is into saying, you know, well, we should not have this. I mean, we should have this over here at East Meadow. We ought to be doing more with it. You're not doing any more with it over here right now than you are, you, you know, as a district, over at the junior, senior high school, even though they have much less. Okay? Does that make sense? Okay?
So whether or not we are, so we're in this enhancement mode.
Mm-hmm.
Transitioning to that transformation mode, the MR level.
Yeah.
Does not necessarily mean that the technology infrastructure here has to change at all. It's just, it's a mindset and curriculum and all the digital.
Yeah. I'd say it's somewhat of a mindset, but it's actually, it is skills to a large extent.
Who's skills? Who's skills are those?
Teachers. Okay? And that comes from the professional development and the instructional support that we're going to get to. Okay? So why are they so similar? Once again, it's not about the technology. So what is it about? It's about vision and expectations for transformation. Okay? Having a plan for reaching this vision. Before I move on, let me just go back to this for a second. You know, in all of our experience working with districts in many, many different places, and hopefully, you know, this resonates with you and doesn't, you know, isn't anything any different than your own experience, it's never the teachers. Okay? We don't put this on teachers. We don't say, well, jeez, if you only had teachers who, you know, knew more about this stuff, then, you know, they would have this vision. Okay? No, it's not about the teachers. It's about leadership within the district, providing the support so that teachers can actually realize their potential. Okay? Your teachers are, you know, doing pretty much all they can do with what it is that they've been provided, and I'm not talking about just the stuff. Okay? But they need the supports, they need the professional development, they need the guidance to be able to do more. Okay? So what that rest of that stuff is, is a plan. Okay? You've got to be able to articulate where it is that you want teachers to go. And it's not just teachers, but students, and where it is that, how it is that people ought to be using these resources. Okay? What it is that people should be trying to affect. You know, I mean, this thing that I covered here in a nutshell in, you know, a few minutes, may not seem like a few minutes, but, you know, all of this 21st century learning stuff. Okay? You need to be able to articulate that. You need to be able to articulate it in a way that teachers can know what it means. They do generally understand what it means. Okay? But understand how you're going to get them, you know, support them to that place. You need a lot of instructional professional development. Okay? And I say instructional professional development, that may be a little bit redundant at this point, but one of the things that we find all the time, we saw it in the data here, is that there's two kinds of professional development. There's the how-to and then the how to actually use and integrate something. Okay? Teachers in this building were provided with some amount of training, apparently from the vendor, on how to use these things. Okay? That's great. Most people probably know how to turn it on. Okay? They know how to connect this thing to their computer, to the extent that they don't. And we actually saw people over here using these things all the time, so I don't think there's a lot of people who, you know, don't want to use the projector or shy away from it. Okay? But if they don't really use it very much, even for a low-level substitution task like projecting, it's because they don't necessarily see the point in it. Okay? And the reason they don't see the point in it is because, yeah, so I can turn it on, but what am I really going to do with this? How is this going to be any better than standing in front of a board and using regular markers? Okay? So.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Can you quantify the professional development?
How do you mean quantify?
Well, I mean, I hear words like a lot of professional development, significant. I'm just trying to put that in terms, you know, is it quarterly? Is it quarterly, day-long professional development day? Is it ongoing? Is it monthly?
Yeah.
Bi-weekly? Just to get a gauge of kind of understanding what it means in practice.
No, I know what you're asking. It's hard to, in the abstract, to say, you know, you should have a weekly professional development, you know, time. You know, I don't know if weekly is better than monthly. Let me just sort of back up and say, you need to have professional development around the integration of technology. You don't have any right now. So you would be moving from none to some. Okay? Conventionally, and this is a whole lot longer than you probably want to get into right now, but conventionally, in schools nowadays, professional development is not done so much in the context of workshops. Okay? But it's done within the context of professional learning communities, which means that it's something that happens sort of organically among teachers as they work together during common planning time and discussion time and those kinds of things. And then they bring in resources for what they actually need. So that gets to this instructional support thing, which is that, you know, once again, I, the exact way that your teachers are organized over here and how their planning time is organized, I don't have right at the, you know, tip of my fingers, but if there is a weekly grade-level team meeting, okay, which may involve some coaches and the classroom teachers in that team and some specialists and so on and so forth, okay, one of the things that they may take on as a, you know, we want to know more about, is we would like to know more about how we can, in fourth grade, do things with kids to engage them in hands-on learning that is going to challenge them, challenge the development of their digital literacy skills. Okay? That might be an organizing question for the PLC for some amount of time until they're able to address them. Okay? So they may say, well, what do we need to do in order to be able to answer that question because none of us really know that much about that? So what kind of outside expert do we need to bring in? What kind of additional training do we need? Do we need to send somebody to a conference? Do we need to go read some books? Do we need to go and look and see how they're doing it in Belcher Town, you know, or something like that? Those are all the activities that they would do that would constitute professional development. That may not be too satisfying an answer because it's moving way away from, they need to do this twice a week.
Well, it sounds more like what you're saying is it needs to be ongoing.
Absolutely.
It needs to be an ongoing, you know, when I think of professional development, I do think of a seminar or a conference or a four-day, you know, students have a half-day and then teachers stick around and they do a four-hour training or, but this sounds, especially when you're talking about computer literacy, it sounds more like it has to be ongoing.
Yes. It does need to be ongoing. And the number of workshops or outside experts or conferences or, you know, coaching sessions or whatever it is that you might need is going to be driven by what is it that you're actually trying to accomplish through that learning? And that goes back to the vision and expectations. Okay? Because it may turn out, based on the actual composition of individuals who are in that fourth-grade team, that, you know, they've got a handle on this. They've pretty much got this nailed down because maybe one of those fourth-grade teachers already has a certificate in instructional technology, for example. Maybe one of them was from a school, you know, came here from a school where they already did a bunch of this stuff. But, and so they may be that much further ahead of the third-grade team, which maybe has no experience with that and would be starting at a much different place. Okay? So it's very complex in that you actually need to try to get some understanding of where your people are at in terms of their knowledge, but once again, you've still got to go back to there needs to be a common vision and a common set of expectations for what it is that you want folks to be able to do. Okay? I don't want to take up all your time here, so let me move on. We may come back to some of this if necessary. But with all of that that I just said, the stuff does matter. And what do I mean by stuff? Okay? Well, that's kind of obvious. You need the devices. All right? It is silly to be talking about using Google Classroom, for example, in this collaborative mode that would be much more in a transformative direction if you actually don't have devices for kids to sit down and use. Okay? It is difficult to use a tool like a collaborative tool if the only way that you can use it is by going and sitting in the computer lab to do it. Okay? And that's why there's a lot more potential for that kind of thing in this building with the technology that you have than over at the junior, senior high school where you don't actually have that technology. You know, there are very few Chromebooks. There are virtually no portable devices. All of the technology use happens sitting down in a lab over there. So the stuff does make a difference. As I just said, you can't really move beyond augmentation without 21st century tools such as a one-to-one, anytime, anywhere computing environment. Okay? And furthermore, as you know, I think, and as we point out in the report, the disparities moving from sixth to seventh grade in this district are damaging in a lot of different ways. Okay? Damaging to student retention, that is, families wanting their kids to go someplace else when they move over to a, you know, substantially different environment than here, teacher professionalism, and also one of the things that you're targeting strongly and directly and immediately at the secondary level is kids' preparation for college and career. Okay? You know, I, truth be told, I lived for six years up the road in Belcher Town and before I moved out, moved to some other places, but ultimately wound up on the other end of the state. So I, you know, worked at UMass at that time for years and in the engineering department and also the sociology department. But, you know, I know, I know higher ed and, you know, I also know this place and that you, you know, higher ed isn't an abstract concept for kids here. Okay? A number of their parents probably work in the colleges and the universities in this area. Point being is that they know, as I think you probably know and your teachers know, that the environment over at the junior, senior high school doesn't look a thing like the environment that these kids are going to encounter when they go to college. Okay? In terms of what people are doing with the technology, the access that people have to technology, not to mention the rigor and demand that is placed on students' thinking skills when they have to actually use technology within that kind of environment. So all of that is getting to the fact that the environment actually has to be upgraded as well. A, and I'm not going to spend a lot of time with this, we talked about this in the report, there's actually a set of standards that we reference, the ISTI standards. These are the ISTI student standards that basically are saying, okay, so within this transformed environment, what are the kinds of things that we want students to be able to do and some, you know, getting directly at? Give me some examples of things that kids ought to be able to do with the technology in the classroom, and there's a whole set of standards that relate to that. I'm not going to go into that right now. But one of the things that, that, that's what that is, ISTI talks about is in order to be able to reach those ISTI net standards, and there's standards for teachers and administrators and so on and so forth, there's something called essential conditions. And this, in a nutshell, is basically saying that you need to have these things in place in order to be able to support the kind of learning that you want to ideally have in place to achieve the net standards, and all of that is in line with the higher order thinking skills and the SAMR model and so on and so forth. Okay? So our recommendations basically hit most of these essential conditions. So what are our recommendations? And I condensed this from the report, and in the report, there's 11 of them, basically, and I was able to lump things together a little bit here. I'm going to preface this by saying very quickly that we don't issue these recommendations as if you don't do this stuff, you know, the world's going to end. We realize that these are our recommendations. We try to, you know, apply some logic as to why we're saying what it is that we're saying. Okay? But ultimately, it's up to you. It's up to you to decide which of these things you can afford, how you're going to be able to budget this stuff, how you want to organize them in priority. We try to be very practical and come up with some things, we think, that can actually get some immediate action and some immediate traction. And, you know, where it is stuff that we see is a little bit farther out, we've tried to say that. Okay? We do think that it's important to get one-to-one devices at the junior, senior high school, and aligned with that is a device management system that can be used to provide security and also efficiency in terms of time for increasing the number of devices. The efficiency in terms of time is very important. I know that David's very concerned about the security part as well, but as you also know as a board, staff is probably one of the more expensive things, expensive resources in a school district. Okay? So as you get more and more devices, you can't simply, you know, beat the heck out of your staff by, you know, demanding that they're going to be able to do more and more to be able to support those devices. Okay? And you can't just simply add bodies to manage those devices. Okay? So fortunately, there's software and there's systems that can be put in place to do some of this stuff. You need to have such systems. Okay? We don't think that the device management system that you've got right now is necessarily serving all your needs, and I think it will do even less if you just add more devices. Okay? So those things go together. Instructional support, this goes back to the professional development. That's extraordinarily important. You do have some instructional support right now, and that comes mostly in the bodies of the library and media specialists, the person here and the person over at the secondary level. But I think that their roles need to be clarified, and it needs to be a little more clear as to where they fit in in terms of being instructional support. I believe that there is a stipend right now in place for the library and media specialists to provide instructional support. I think that that obviously should continue. Um, I think that um, that obviously should continue. Ultimately, you'll probably wanna be looking at getting an instructional technology specialist, but we're not saying that that's an immediate recommendation because that's adding staff, okay? But I think that that down the road, that will be what you're looking at. But right now, I think just simply clarifying library media specialist's role with regard to technology would be important. One of the things we also talk about in the report with regard to that is the whole issue of technical support. I'm gonna get to that in a little bit, so keep moving here. Um, engage the community, and I don't just mean the the parent community, but I mean the educational community in the district in that visioning and planning and implementing piece, okay? There's no technology committee in either building right now. And some people may say, oh my god, he says we need to have another committee, okay? Well, it's not just having a committee, it's like, I'm not just suggesting that you write a plan because I think you ought to write a plan, okay? But you need to actually engage the people who are going to be using this technology in helping you figure out what technology to get, how to support it, how to provision it, so on and so forth, okay? And to to talk about how to to implement that plan that we're talking about, okay? Teacher professional development, we've talked about that some already, um, you need to have it. Um, there's very little of it right now, it needs to focus more on integration than just how to, and it needs to be connected to that, um, to the instructional technology support folks. If it's the library media specialists, they need to be, when I, part of what I say when I say clarify what they do, is it needs to be clear to them that part of their job is to go out of here and actually work with the teachers. Now, a good example is in this library here right now, okay? Um, the the library media specialist spends a huge amount of her time in that lab running basic um, computer skills classes or drill and practice stuff with kids, okay? So, if there was an expectation that she was going to not be in that room but actually be out here in the halls helping teachers who had, you know, a need for, um, you know, well, show me how I can actually, you know, do this collaborative um, work with my kids and have them all blogging, okay? Or show me um, how to do something with my um, smart projector that actually has to do with kids coming up to the board and interacting, okay? She couldn't do that because she's nailed down in that room, okay? So, you need to think about prioritizing tasks and figure out, does that make sense? This gets into all sorts of other things because one of the reasons why she's in that room is that when the kids are in that room, they're not with their teacher and their teacher's probably off doing something else, okay? So, you know, I know that's how it works, alright? But that's that gets us back to the leadership element, okay? Are we prioritizing teacher collaboration and teacher professional development and teachers working together, okay? Do we offer planning time? Do we figure out how we re-engineer the schedule so that we have that planning time, okay? Schools all over the country do different things to make that work, it's not just one way to do it, alright? Um, we know that that there's been talk already of hiring a network specialist and a data coordinator. We think that's extraordinarily important, um, data coordinator in particular because you have needs around um, using data and not just sending data back up to the state that we have one person here right now who primarily does that work, okay? You need to have additional people. This raises the whole possibility, though, of of rebalancing and augmenting your technology staff, okay? So, it's not just a question of, you know, getting somebody else so that they can, you know, go do things that David doesn't get time to do, okay? Which is important as well, okay? Um, but it's really thinking about what what is the role of a technology staff, okay? And how does that staff actually work together to support the needs of teachers? And those needs go beyond fixing their computers, okay? They go to things such as using data. This is a another sort of catch-all way of of glomming together several recommendations, which is the the statement, you've probably heard this other times before, that free really isn't free most of the time, okay? So, you have made um, tremendous use of donated equipment over at the junior, um, senior high school, okay? You've made, I don't say that lightly because I've never seen another district do what it is that you guys have done, okay? Other people aren't basically running their operation off of donated equipment, okay? That's tremendous. At the same time, the the cost of doing that is a situation where you have to have somebody who is shepherding that equipment and dealing with that equipment in a way that you don't necessarily over here where the equipment is new, it's functional, it's more easy to to manage, okay? So, what's the cost of the free equipment? That's something that needs to be thought through, not just immediately, but over the long haul. Um, likewise, um, we suspect that in a lot of cases, teachers are using various programs and apps and so on and so forth that actually aren't licensed or fully subscribed to. Um, I'm not saying anybody's doing anything illegal, but um, you haven't actually paid for the programs and therefore aren't unlocking all the features that you would have in a paid version of the program, okay? So, I'm not suggesting just sort of go out and get stuff, but, you know, think about what you need and make sure that you've got the right stuff, okay? And lastly, prioritizing digital literacy, um, we've talked a little bit about this already. Nobody's responsible for digital literacy now other than the library media specialists, okay? And that's not gonna work over the long haul. Um, teachers need to understand their role in teaching digital literacy because digital literacy is a pervasive skill, okay? So, you can't just sort of send kids to computer class and they get digital literacy skills, okay? So, so thinking about how you prioritize that and and embed that throughout the instructional environment is important, okay? And this is the last one, um, we have some some recommendations related to teacher laptops. Um, we think ultimately you do need to provide teachers with um, devices. Um, and uh, we also have some recommendations around um, thinking about how um, rules and regulations around how teachers move things or don't move things or, you know, what teachers can actually do with their devices, um, but I don't need to go too much farther into that right now. And I think that is it. I realize I took up probably a little bit more time than um, what we would, but um, there's a lot to cover here. Uh, even in a small district, um, there's a lot to learn and and, you know, a lot to meet on this. So, I can take questions for, you know, anything that you'd like to talk about now for as long as you want or um, you know, we can table all of this and, uh, you know, you can, we can talk offline, whatever is your pleasure.
So, in terms of putting that roadmap that you talked about, who does that? We do that, we decide?
Done about that.
The number of years it's gonna take us to get to some of those recommendations that you left?
Yeah, um, that process is a strategic planning process. And I'm I'm, I tiptoe around on that one because I don't want to to come in, you know, hard and heavy on the fact that you need to write a technology plan. That used to be the case um, a number of years ago, and there were other outside structural reasons as to why school districts needed to create technology plans. I don't know that you necessarily need to do that, but something that I'd said to the superintendent when we first started working here, and that you all have your Grand B Public Schools strategic plan, um, colorful documents in front of you. I think you need to spend some time thinking about how technology supports those things, okay? And come up with some strategies. I mean, so yes, that is a planning process, you're not, cause, you know, they're not just gonna fall down from the sky and land on you and and it's gonna be good, but you need to actually have a discussion about how technology supports those kinds of things and specifically what you're going to do and when, and obviously the budgetary implications of that, okay? Um, you know, that doesn't necessarily have to be a a huge protracted, drawn-out process. Many times when we work with school districts, we do this piece and then we, you know, move into helping with the the strategic planning part. You know, you have to figure out, you know, whether you wanna do that kind of work, how you wanna go about doing it. You don't need to have somebody come in from the outside to help you with it. Um, you can have this discussion internally, but sometimes it does help to have some outside perspective.
And I think um, at least partially where I was going with that, you mentioned some best practices that are available out there. Is there something that at least we can see, look at to see how schools, our scale, our uh, budget constraints started attacking some of these constraints?
Mm-hmm.
Cause there's a lot there, you know?
Yeah.
It's, it, it looks like it's four or five bullets, but anything from professional development to uh, technology uh, investment, it has to come together, but it has to come together gradually. What are the initial steps, how we get to that full picture? If there are best practices that we can look at, that would be great.
Yeah, um, there are. I don't know how valuable it would ever be for you to look at another school district's tech plan. I mean, you certainly can, um. I say I don't know how valuable it would be for you to look at another school district's tech plan because no other school district is Grand, okay? What you're shooting for, you know, that I refer to as as the vision is really the stuff that was in those those first, you know, several slides and things um, that are related to those net standards and such. You know, through discussion with leadership team, I know that leadership team basically is aware of that kinda stuff and is shooting for that as well, okay? So, I think really the 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 work is to sit down and actually start to put some shape to it in terms of, you know, what have other people done. Um, that's something that that I'm able to talk about, but I think that, you know, there are other, there's a, there's an organization in the state called MasQ. Some of you may know of MasQ, um, and it's the Massachusetts Computer Using Educators. Um, they uh, they convene people to talk about essentially, you know, mostly the sort of somewhat smaller picture of this all the time. Um, they have a, you know, an annual conference, they have actually like three annual conferences um, over the course of the year, um, where they bring people together and talk about pieces of this work, okay? So, that would be a a good opportunity to learn what other school districts are doing. I mean, you know, first and foremost, I would say that, you know, you oughta like tap into the districts that are like right on your borders and say, you know, how about this? Why don't we, you know, pull together the um, tech coordinators from four districts around Grand B? Get them all out here for a day and have a discussion about, you know, how did they get to where they are? And, you know, um, tap into their knowledge, I'm sorry, I'm not being real articulate about that.
No, I think that that's exactly what I'm looking for.
Yeah.
There are some of the suggestions, I think that's a great idea. The uh, technology committee that you mentioned earlier, cause I I know that there are some folks who are quite knowledgeable, who offered their assistance in the past, that, you know, who can be part of a committee like that. You had one bullet there that we did not really uh, get into very deeply, but involving the community.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and, you know, we can, we can look to see if anybody from the community may be interested in joining and giving us that, so, okay?
And then, you know, I, I'm a big proponent of process. So, you know, I think putting together a committee is one thing. I think actually, you know, getting that committee to do something other than just sort of sit around and look at each other and say, you know, jeez, wouldn't this be nice, um, is all another thing. Um, you know, there is a process for doing this work. There is a process for, you know, creating a strategic technology plan, whether it's a standalone plan or I think what's better is something that's aligned with an existing um, strategic plan in the district.
So, let let me just try it one more time, I think I'm not asking the question. I'm, so I'm hoping that there is something because obviously we don't have it.
Mm-hmm.
At least to get us started. I mean, we don't, nobody starts a strategic plan without knowing what the strategy is and, you know, goals are, objectives are, just they go look at something. What is that something that we can look at?
You can go to my website and download a sample strategic technology plan. Um, you can go to the state and find sample strategic technology plans. You can go to any school district in the state and there, I'd say at least eighty percent of them, probably greater, there's a link on their website for tech plan. You can click on that and download it and get it, you know? Once again, you're never gonna find one that you'd say, well, jeez, that's the one that we want. That wouldn't make any sense, but you could certainly, you know, you know, if I sat down with my machine in twenty minutes, I could get fifteen tech plans, you know, sitting on your desktop. So, you know, that's that's not hard to do.
Cool. Any questions for Jeff?
I think I need a little more time to to process this.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
This document.
Yeah, for sure, and, you know, I'm, just talk to Cheryl about this and, you know, frankly, I'll come back. No, I really will.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, if if the the commi, I I know how school committees work and you've always got more on your agenda than you can do, but, you know, if you wanna have another meeting at some point and, you know, just talking about tech and tech planning and stuff like that, I'll come back.
That's good to know.
Yeah. Alright?
Cool.
Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yep. Thanks a lot.
Sure.
So, you enjoyed it?
Well, I heard some stuff, yeah.
Yeah.
It was very long. I hope I'm gonna take off.
You want to?
Yes.
Sure.
Thank you.
No, thank you. Excellent stuff, yeah. Alright, we have nothing in our old business. Uh, upcoming business, I guess, remains the evaluation piece. I don't know when we're gonna get into that, the superintendent's evaluation. We have to really put the framework together and then start working on that. Um, did you wanna keep that here in front of us on the agenda, upcoming, you know, upcoming business until we get to it?
Yes.
Okay. You have some presentation for your superintendent's report, yeah?
Oh, I do, we have our second S S given, so?
Oh, they're here?
Yes.
Alright, hey! Alright, is that for them? I saw technology's already working, I guess. Do you have a clicker for that, Cheryl?
No, it's, I don't.
You don't? Does it take the same USB stuff?
Yes.
It's just such a sense that you're saying earlier.
Yeah.
I just wanna do it, that's fine. Can we go over, is that on the drive?
It's on Master and account, and then we share it with them.
Um, yes.
Jeff, just take off the mic. Nope.
Alright. Anybody has a good story or? So, you couldn't stay away, huh?
Spring break in about two.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. It's good to see you.
Yeah, no, it's good to see you guys.
That's uh, next year's bus.
Next year's bus, bro?
Yeah.
Is this gonna work with an Apple?
Uh, USB should be a USB. Is it downloading in drivers?
No, it's identifying my keyboard.
Can you read the shift key?
I'll be, I'll be.
No, it's not working. Did you click?
Yeah, I I don't have the key.
You don't need it, I just like.
Oh, you don't, okay.
It would be nice.
All right.
There we go. No. Okay, okay.
Sorry.
Yeah, we're.
I don't think we don't have it either, so.
Stand over here.
Hi, I'm Jordan Healy.
I'm Ariana K. Cocker.
And we are the Regional Student Advisory and State Student Advisory, um, delegates for Granby High School. Um, so this is kind of just like our first update. We haven't been able to like make it. So, um, we just wanted to tell you all what we were doing, like why you let us go here, what, um, has kind of been going on with the projects that we've been a part of and the projects that are currently going on at the regional and state levels. Yay! So, there's four committees in the State Student Advisory Council and the Regional Student Advisory Council. You can choose to adopt them or not, and all of them were adopted. Uh, so the first committee deals with wellness. Um, I wrote it all here, but. So, uh, just so I wouldn't forget, but, um, they they deal with modern day high school. If some schools, um, don't have health classes, they don't want to like venture into the drugs and alcohol portion, they just wanna do PE. Like, it's it's different for all the schools, but this way with the RSEC and SSEC, they get to touch over everything, whether it's student to student interaction, whether it's pamphlets, whether it's emails, just everything. Um, so the wellness committee wants to kind of make sure that everybody gets the health class experience of the education in drugs and alcohol, what they can do to your body, what the effects are, um, maybe at like a lesser level, but it's still something if it's not anything. Um, so the next committee would be global outreach. So, the global outreach committee I hold very dearly. I'm not in this committee, we're not in this committee, but, um, it kind of holds somewhere cute in my heart because of the whole diversity portion and what we've been talking about in our stu- uh, Student Advisory Council and our advisory groups in the high school. Um, it's made up of a bunch of kids from different heritages, different languages they speak. Um, it has some other kids from the Chinese immersion school in Hadley. Um, it's just a lot of different cultures coming together and these kids really were passionate about the things that they felt that other students weren't getting or weren't like being able to absorb about other students and therefore creating a barrier of um, either language or bullying or different culture clashes, stuff like that. So they wanted to kind of, um, get, uh, they wanted to become more present on social media. They are, again, talk- this is a lot of talking through students because that's how we kind of communicate to each other if it's through social media. So, they, um, they, so this last point is Globi. So their their Instagram page, that's their mascot, cause they just wanna kind of create this big, this big kind of global understanding, their global outreach for each other. The other one is civics. Um, so one of their goals was to kind of be able to, because we're on the Student Advisory Council doesn't mean that we wanna go into politics. We want to be your next leaders. They they just wanna make sure that we have a well-rounded education of this is what you can do, this is how you can make change and things like that. Um, so they wanted to educate kids on their civic duties as voting, as not as much like taxes, but like just being able to be active in your community, coming to your school committee, um, meetings, coming to, talk to your principal, talk to your vice principal, be able to make a change in your, uh, school and your environment. Um, so one of the ways that they were active about this was for National Voter Registration Day. They talked to all their juniors and seniors, everybody that was sixteen and over, and they held, they had this table at lunch or they sent out emails and said, um, hey, like this is coming up, like you should do this, like it's really cool, and they had like incentives and stuff like that to be able to get this generation to be vocal about the things that we want as as the next generation coming up. Um, so that was kind of what dated.
And then.
Who'd who'd sides on those things?
Who's that on what?
Uh, on the civics, uh, committee. Those things that are important to you, you guys decide and make a list and then go out and do those or?
Yeah, so.
Go fuck the students.
Yeah, the students kind of take what's in their schools and they say, okay, what, like, this is a problem, this is how we solve it, I guess. I don't.
So you guys select it.
Yeah, it's all, so, RSEC, SSEC is truly like student-run, like it's literally just us in a big huge room at the Department of Education, well, at the SSEC level. But there's like one or two adults and there's like forty, fifty kids just in this one room, like talking about the ways that we can, um, improve our schools, like kind of like this, but with like teenagers, and it's super cool. Um, and, yeah, so they they make their list, they go through it, they say, this is important to us, and they make act- they make a list of actions as to get that point across. Um, okay, so, this is Vocal. This is us. Hi! So, we, um, at the state level, Sheila Peoples, who is actually the, uh, Western Mass Regional Student Advisory Council rep, um, that works at Desi and comes to Western Mass every, uh, two months to like kind of work with us, see where we're at. Um, she actually presented this to us, cause at the beginning of of each fiscal school year, we have a bunch of adults come in and we all sit there with our hands crossed, like really serious about, um, what they wanna present to us that we will take up as projects in our schools for the year. So Sheila actually came to us and was like, hey, I got, I did this thing after NCAS, like it would be really cool if you could help out the analytics people, um, and kind of get down and dirty into your own schools. Um, so at the end of the eighth grade, last year's eighth grade and tenth grade class, they took a school climate survey. It was like, it was part of NCAS, but it was also anonymous, so, um, they they took this survey about, like, how do you feel in school? How do, like, do you see people in school that resemble what you look like? Like, things like that that would contribute to the climate. Um, so, they they gathered all the data, they put it in and, um, based on the amount of responses that they got, they gave us data. So some schools had, it was completely an optional thing, like they weren't forcing you to take it, so that's how they figured that they would get more, um, more.
Honest.
Honest, yes, honest results, uh, from the students. So, when they went through all that, Granby actually had data, which I was super excited about. Um, and, cause it was like, it was like the bare minimum, which was really good. Um, but, uh, another, like something else that was really cool about Granby was that, um, not every school in Massachusetts is like seven through twelve, like us. And where that has its downsides, it also has its perks, because we can work with these students from seventh until twelfth grade and have them be ready to leave. Um, and the middle school is very, very different from the high school, but we were able to see where in our building we can improve. Um, we have this data, it's not public, uh, the superintendent has access to it, but at our, if we, if you invite us back again, we would like to show you our final, um, projects, our final kind of wrap-up of the year, um, and be able to be more articulate in the data that we were presented as to help you guys kind of, as adults that represent us, um, get going on the projects that you feel are important for us. Cause we might think something is like really super important, really eager, and like we want French toast for lunch, but like you guys really truly know what's best for us in the long run. So, if you would like to have us back, we would really like to go through that with you. Um, and I have Sheila's emails too, if you guys ever wanna reach out to her for any reason. Um, but, yeah. So, any questions?
When can you come back and present all of that?
Anytime, yeah. Um, we have our, so our next State Student Advisory Council meeting is.
March twenty first?
March twenty first, so not this week, but next week. Um, and I'll be attending, you'll probably be attending, um, and that's when we'll have most of our, oh, oh! So we did, um, we did teacher focus groups.
Yes, yes, sorry, thank you.
Sorry, sorry, I know. So, yes, I have, um, we have spoken to many teachers in our classroom, cause we did have, um, just because we had the student kind of data, student, uh, results and what they said about the climate, like, it's also the teacher's workplace. It's like how they feel, like, they didn't take a survey, but we still wanted to know like how they felt too, because I feel like if they aren't focused, if they aren't like in line with what they're doing, then how are they gonna be active, able teachers for their students to learn? So, we we got, we got some different results. It was really interesting, because we got teachers that went to Granby, like, had their high school education, and some that came from big schools and had big school experiences with like either being a student there or being a teacher there, and then their experience at Granby with our like three hundred and school students here. And it was, it was just kind of eye-opening to to not think about it as a student perspective, as I have to be here every day, I have to do this. But like, they come here, they wanna learn, they wanna have us learn, they want the best for us, and kind of that that relationship, that give and take, um, was really interesting. So I I would love to kind of incorporate that into my final report as well of the teachers' responses, um, to the data and to just how they were in general. Um, cause we didn't tell them anything about the data, we just said, how do you feel about, like, your workplace and how the students respond to you? And how do you respond to the students was basically our questions. Um, but yeah, so we have, we have yet to do a student focus group, but I've gotten responses from like individual students about this. Uh, so we haven't done like one big one yet, but that is coming up. So, yeah. Anything else?
So you're going to both, uh, RSEC and SSEC?
Yes.
And you're going to RSEC?
Both.
Both?
Yeah, we're both delegates.
Okay.
Uh, Granby is really, really supportive, it like, we're like up there with, um, a bunch of other schools, but like, we're like the most represented, I think, at RSEC at least.
Yeah.
Um, and I was gonna go off with that.
Are you guys both on the same committees?
Yeah. Yes, so I'm the co-chair of the Vocal at the regional level, and then, yeah, that's it. But, yeah.
Cool.
So, anything else?
So when I, when do you think you're gonna have your analysis completed?
So, the, um, there was a timeline. The student focus groups were supposed to be done by March twenty first, but like we, all of us asked for an extension, because like, we're also students, we have other things we need to. I'm searching for colleges. Um, but, so after, probably after that meeting and then after the regional meeting, um, which is like the first or second week of April, um, we'll have a better understanding of like where we're supposed to be at. Um, we wanna get this done like ASAP, so that we can get this for you guys. Um, but I think like end of April, early May would be ideal for us.
We'll be here.
Good, thank you.
We look forward to it.
Yeah. Thank you, Michelle. Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, thank you guys very much for coming.
Thank you very much.
We've been waiting for you. So as a souvenir of the day, just take the Mac.
Just, yeah, right.
Yeah?
Yeah, oh no, I didn't, I just shared it with, oh, that's right, yeah, so you're doing it, you too.
We'll get it.
Thank you.
As a gift of, uh, uh, for the technology. Yes, very nicely done. Are we good to go?
Okay.
Um, do you wanna move things around?
Yeah, we suggest chart wise?
Yeah. All right. So let's move chart wells to the top. I can give you a couple of papers if you.
So we are the date. So, I've been providing, um, each month with, uh, the committee an update as to where we are with, um, school lunch, so.
Okay.
Um, Ken LaPage, our food service director, and Mike Edgar from Chart Wells are here to kind of just elaborate on on those monthly reports and give us a little more, um, in-depth information as to where we are year-to-date and where we're going. So, thank you guys.
Well, yeah, not a problem, you know, it's a pleasure to be here. Uh, we've been here regularly, but this is a twenty thousand foot view summary of the year-to-date performance for the food nutrition program. Cause I know in the past year, there have been very difficult conversations about the decline and, uh, the loss of enrollment and revenues. Uh, so we started out, uh, at the bottom of the page is is the great news. We're twenty-nine K better than prior year. But let's more importantly, talk about how we got there, what we're working on to continue to improve it. And then the middle of the page are the are the huge, uh, icebergs that have really helped us improve the profitability, things that we talked about last year. And we're also here to get Ken used to speaking in public, cause he's wicked nervous, wicked. So he's here, we're grooming him. But sales comparison, these are the benchmarks that I initially look at for any districts on a weekly, monthly basis to see how they're doing. I I compare them to other similar districts, but for here, we're just comparing it to prior year. Cause we're talking about the significant turnaround year over year. So the enrollment i- is a positive enrollment, we're n- we're no longer declining, we're up about, um, sixteen students, which is good news, seven twenty-seven. We looked at some claim reports, February to February claim reports. I know there's a little bit of a moving target on a weekly, monthly basis, but generally, we're ahead prior year. The days of operation, that's the number of days the food service is, not only the schools in in classes, but the food service is in operation, because that drives the program's revenues. It's a little deceiving, and Ken can kind of ex- expound on it because of the backpack days. But for all intents and purposes, we had a hundred eight this year, hundred and five last year. So we're we're close, we're a little bit better. We have to admit there have been overall less snow this year, but s- some other different, uh, weather impact days.
A little deceiving, we've had five two-hour delays this year, which we've lost like five hundred breakfasts due to the fact of the two-hour delays.
That'll be important when we look at the average daily count or even the bread, the participation. Cause that, the participation percentage is based off the total meal served versus the enrollment. So if there's a early dismissal or a late school and there are fewer meals, it drives that down a little bit. But I can, I can add some context to that. Uh, average daily sales, last year we were just over seventeen hundred, this year we're lagging a little bit behind at sixteen sixty-nine. There is a surprising drop in, uh, lunch participation, um, two percent from year-to-date. Good news is January was three percent above prior year, but it's, I expect by the end of the year, the program will grow and will be better than prior year, but because of a slow September and October and any weather delays, those percent, that lunch participation's lagging behind. But the breakfast, this year we've served over ten thousand, last year we were just over nine thousand. That's with the delays. Lunches, we've served thirty-nine thousand four hundred, last year thirty-eight nine, just under thirty-nine thousand. So the program is growing. Yes, there are a few more days, but the program is growing, which is the direction we want it to take. Now more importantly, we need to look at the costs and expenses, because that's where the savings have occurred. I look at the net product costs, so that's the food and the paper used to feed the students in both locations. We were fifty-six hundred over prior year, but we need to remember we've served a few more meals. We've had some challenges getting USDA commodities, so rather than those free assistant foods, we've had to purchase some food. And then we've had menu adjustments to drive the participation, and those improvements have been about seventeen hundred. I've had three directors from other districts assisting Ken, two dieticians nagging him to death to make sure that he's compliant with state regs. The the directors kind of take a look and look at the participation, are we feeding as many kids with great food? The dieticians keep us healthy, but together, that's where the healthy program comes in. We have a responsibility both ways. Payroll costs, this is the Goliath of the savings. I addressed it last year, that with the school consolidation, we should see some hourly wage savings, which we, which we've seen. I addressed it last year that with the school consolidation, we should see some hourly wage savings, which we, which we've seen. You know, the overall payroll cost, we've saved about thirty-two thousand dollars year-to-date. Fifty-five hundred have been in reduced wages, that one person that wasn't carried over. We also had a change in our chef, I don't remember, everybody remembers Junior, but Junior left, and when it comes down to nuts and bolts, Junior was taking medical benefits where our new staff is not. So that's where the nine thousand, they're just not participating, they're welcome to, it's open to everybody, but they're not, and that's where the savings are coming in. Last year when unfortunately Andrew, well fortunately, because we now have Ken, but with the change of directors, I pointed out that an incoming director would be less senior, the salary would be less, so salary and taxes are, are rolled into that. And then Ken is not taking the same insurance that Andrew was, so there's some savings there. But all told, it's those four items that are, are driving the payroll savings for the program, which is great, cause that drives right to the bottom line. There were some changes in non-food, non-payroll expenses, we had two significant ch- uh, savings. Year-to-date, we have eleven hundred and less, if we're, if we're taking fewer USDA commodities, there are fewer shipping costs that are associated with those free foods, they do charge you so much to move the cases around. And then, we're, we've been hit with fifteen hundred dollars year-to-date, uh, fewer taxes and licenses going forward, and that should continue. Then, by no means am I saying that's a year-to-date that's gonna reverse, but that should, uh, carry over to the end of the year. So, year-to-date, I should have put that on there, we've lost about, um, just about six thousand dollars at the end of February, which is great. Keeping in mind, last year, in the last four months, the program made about six thousand dollars, so I would, I'm anticipating right now to come in just at break even or just above breaking even, um, as we address in our proposal. So it's all a good story. And I'm willing to take any questions?
Okay, so.
Yep.
Second to my, I'll go first.
Go ahead, no, please.
I think this is great.
Okay.
And I was gonna ask you about how this related to last year, so I thought it was about, if just about the same number, maybe a little bit higher last year at this point in time?
Last year we were thirty-two.
Thirty-two?
Yep.
I knew, I knew it was close.
Last year we were thirty-two, this year we're six.
But do we, do we know why is, will we tend to have that burst at the end of the year to bring us up? Cause last year, at the end of the year, we didn't lose quite as much as we probably would like.
Definitely more op days at the end, Mar- May is a big month for us, March is a.
March is a full month, uh, May's a full month, um, we do, we do better in months that have more operating days, because we pay for our costs and then we, we make a little bit of profit, uh, within those months, so the back four months give us that. Uh, I don't remember how many op days we had in June last, last year, uh, my guess is it went into the middle of the month, but historically Granby has always made up some ground in the last four months.
You know, I was just wondering if we knew why that was, it just, it just seems strange to me that.
No, it's, you know, when I look at the expenses, uh, September, October, November, our busiest time, we have a lot of labor. By the middle of the year, we figure that out and we may have some schedule adjustments to save on some labor. Uh, September, October, and expect, especially I think October, November here, we had difficulties getting that USDA food in. Whereas now, that whole program's on cruise control, we have it in-house, Ken, you know, can bring that in, integrate that into the menu, so your food cost drops a little bit. So those two items, you, you almost get to manage with, you get the same program, but with fewer expenses in the last half of the year.
Okay. And I'm still, I'm still trying to figure out, um, it's gonna take me a while to get there, but how we can be so far ahead in meals served and yet down at the bottom, we're behind on the meals per day. It's not by much, but I'll, I'll see if I can.
Say it one more time?
So I, I'm struggling thinking through how we can be so far ahead on, you know, with the lunches served and, you know.
Four ninety-five more lunches.
Well, so, so down here at the bottom here, the meals per day.
Yep.
That's less, but yet, you know, the lunches served is more and, you know, even, if this serve is more.
The meals per day, we have more, you have a few more operating days, the hundred and eight going into that number.
Okay, so it's probably just.
Yeah, and there are a lot of moving parts in the, and even the limited operating days, I think are screwing those numbers down a little bit. I think if we took those days out and just looked at food service days, the percentages and the averages would be significantly higher. Cause there's no doubt we're driving, the, the program has more sales on a daily basis, um, and we feel comfortable about it. I know in January, the lunch average was over fifty-two percent, so two percent higher than last year's total average. Just doesn't show it in this number because of other months that have dropped it down. But I, you, you wanna see that, because if you have a slow September, you need to make the adjustments, menu adjustments, whatever, so that more students are buying as you go into the year, get smarter tomorrow, more, you know, than you were today. So if we have that participation through the end of the school year, that's exactly what we wanna see.
Okay. So, um, year-to-date budget versus actual is?
Six thousand, four thousand, so two thousand behind.
Two thousand behind, we've, we've had to buy about two thousand more in the, compared to budget. We have, we've had to spend about two thousand more on food costs because of the challenges with the commodities. And compared to the budget, we called for losing two positions, but the food service in this position needed one, one additional part-time worker, so there's like half of, there's a three-hour shift, I think. So we didn't see all the savings there.
Okay, so let me, let me, um, approach it a little differently. The last report Adam that you shared with us, uh, before December.
Mm-hmm.
And this was dated, uh, January twenty-second.
Yep.
It's, uh, referring to a net profit of eleven hundred thirty-five, the last line. Versus, versus the thirty-six hundred deficit.
What school committee meeting was that?
Which folder?
Yeah, just ahead of the slide.
Good question. Uh, January, January twenty-eighth.
So that would have been December data.
It is.
Yep.
So are we saying that January plus February, both months were dramatically lower than expected, and therefore, so it goes back to what you were asking, basically? So now we are?
Yeah, we were plus like twelve hundred going into December, January, February, we lost, we lost three in January and then fifteen hundred just passed, so it dropped us to two rank.
Okay.
Total. But it.
So our net profit in January was negative?
Three thousand.
Three thousand, and it was fifteen hundred in February, so that's about forty-five hundred dollars, right?
Yes.
So given that in Dec- end of December, it seems like we were at eleven hundred plus.
Correct.
So the net, our net position is what right now?
Oh, it's about sixty, we're about negative six, sixty-five hundred, something like that?
Six thousand.
Six thousand.
So.
Budget didn't lose four, so two thousand.
Alright, so we, we were in negative four, four, forty-five hundred or so.
Mm-hmm.
We were in positive eleven thirty-five end of December. So those two actually are going in other different directions.
That's not unusual, cause they were short months.
No, no, I understand that, but mathematically, I'm just trying to make sense. There is a, there is a deficit of forty-five hundred dollars that we incurred, January plus February, correct?
Correct.
But end of December, we were actually in positive territory, but eleven hundred and thirty-five dollars. So that doesn't add on top of the, uh, forty-five hundred dollars of deficit, it actually goes in the other direction. So that should be something close to, if you were at forty-five, it should be thirty-five, thirty-four hundred, correct, as opposed to six thousand?
On the sheet, it says we're, our budget is, or we're less thirty-four fifty-four, and that's the math that makes sense with what the numbers are you're using, but, so I don't know where that's six.
That paragraph addressed food costs, I think Emery's looking at program profitability.
Right, right, yeah.
Okay, but that, that's just funny, that's where the, that's where the math adds up, you know.
Right, yeah, it just, yeah. But the, again, this, this is the last line here.
Mm-hmm.
Is referring to profit.
Alright, I was, I was just gonna look, see if I have the key note for.
Okay.
No, don't, what do I have, this is, February, January.
Juice up, Dan.
Right, I have January, where, where the program lost thirty-five hundred, this pa- past month another sixteen hundred. And then with December, what did you say, we lost in December?
No, we actually, uh, year-to-date, we were, uh, in the black, eleven hundred thirty-five.
Alright, well, I, I, I'd have to look at and get Adam any data you want, I don't, I don't have it in front of me.
Okay. Right, so, you know, with, with those two negative figures plus this.
Mm-hmm.
It, it's not six thousand, that's what I'm saying, just, you know, there is something that doesn't, that doesn't make sense.
Okay. I'll work with Ken, we'll get Adam.
Alright.
You know, a year-to-date profitability.
So are you, are you realistically anticipating that, even based on your numbers, that we will be in the positive territory at the end of the year?
I am, I mean, I think my numbers are, show a little worse, um, than your year-to-date number.
I'm hoping those are your numbers too, Russ.
Yeah, uh, and I, I'm afraid, I'm sorry, I don't have them in front of me, but I am, I think we, uh, should continue to see the growth in the meal participation. Uh, continue to see the labor savings that we've addressed and the, and the costs and the non-food, non-labor. Um, so it should be, just like we described, a profitable, even if it's just a little bit, um, profitable program come to the end of June.
It'll be great, um, one more question, uh, especially on the payroll cost savings.
Mm-hmm.
Is that something that's gonna continue, uh, do you anticipate continuation of that, or is this just one shot?
No, no, we're Mac, we, we have the, what I would consider the optimal schedule now. So the hourly wages should continue, the, no employee has signed up for the, uh, insurance benefits on both sides, hourly, uh, nor Ken, um, and then the salary savings will continue, cause we're not, you know, Andrew's long gone. Ken's worth all the money we pay him, but.
Especially based on the reports that we're seeing, absolutely.
And he wants to do the presentation next time, so.
Yes.
He's taking notes.
So here's the thing, if, if you were to come every meeting or every other meeting, we talk so much, you would not even feel it. So you would, you would be a pro at it, so, uh.
Well, we know you guys are busy, you have a full agenda, but.
Yeah, so, uh, let me just, uh, tell you this and then I'll turn it to everybody else, um. As you said, I'm glad that we're not having a painful conversation, uh, this year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, based on the numbers that Adam's been sharing with us, uh, every other month, right?
It's every month, but.
Yeah, I think, I think partnership this year with Adam has been, it's been a big.
And that's where I'm going with this, I think, you know, Ken really appreciate that you're working very closely with Adam. Uh, and I think it is showing in the numbers, we're hopeful that this is gonna be a year that, uh, we can, we can finish in the black. Uh, and, uh, you know, we're looking forward to, uh, the upcoming reports, but we're, we're absolutely hopeful, yeah.
Continue growth. You know, plugs to the end of the table, both positions, uh, they're accessible, we can talk about pro- uh, problems, you know, thoughts. Uh, I appreciate the help they give Ken, so does Cheryl and Adam too.
And we appreciate your, your help.
Thank you.
Great.
Good, thank you guys.
Alright. Have a good night.
We only have Sunny left.
I believe, actually, yes. Yep, yep. Yes, yeah, your, your notes are correct. Um, so do we wanna do your report first, or do we wanna jump into the, uh, budget conversation?
Um, well, for the sake of my friends, maybe budget.
Okay, that's, that's just.
Why's your report long?
So she's saying you guys five minutes, her, her report is five minutes long, so. Alright, so let's, let's do, let's do our budget.
Cheryl, I'm taking notes to see if it's the same as the other one. It is, it just has the numbers attached this time. Okay, um, first of all, thank you to the leadership and staff who are here tonight, um, thank you for all of your hard work leading up to this moment. Um, we are very excited to present the budget this year, uh, we do believe it represents, uh, meeting the goals of the school committee, meeting the goals of the strategic plan, and setting a vision, and maintaining fiscal discipline to sustain a long-term positive budget picture. As you know, we have been under a reductionist budget scenario for several years, and this is a budget, um, that actually sets a strong foundation for us to move forward, um, build our programs, um, but create a foundation so that for the next three to five years, uh, we have the resources we need to move the district forward and implement the strategic plan. Um, I am gonna turn it over to Adam, and he's gonna talk about a lot of what we talked about at both the public forum and, um, at the presentation last time to school committee. Um, the public forum was very, uh, it was well-attended for Granby, was very happy to see people actually in the audience, and I think, uh, thank you to Chris and to Al Wishart, who, uh, sent out the all-call to the town. Um, the majority of folks who were here at the public forum, uh, to give feedback to the budget, most of them said that they received the phone call and were at the forum because of the phone call. So our ability to reach out to the community and bring them in, um, I think is paying off, and we hope to continue that as well. Okay, so without further ado. Turn it over.
Comes arrows, is it the?
Yeah, I can be your Vanna.
Yeah, oh, perfect, yeah. Okay, so, um, just real quick, this presentation is in the folder. Um, I would suggest you look at it in the folder, cause it might be a little tough, um, to see it up here and now that. You're on an apple. Yeah, this is, didn't format correctly. Dan's pulling up, no, Dan's pulling up, so I'm just gonna look at it.
Yeah, no, go ahead, I'll, I'll pull it up.
Um.
It's the same, it's got that squishy on it.
Yeah, it's, cause you're on Mac and not a.
Do you want to change to the?
Yes, could we do that, please?
You wanna use my computer, or you have that one on your?
I have been technologically challenged tonight.
Where is that? That slideshow thing on Google Docs, or whatever they call this? Oh, it's present, I think. Go here, it says present.
There's two versions, one that, uh, mobile, a PDF one and one's a, uh.
Yeah, there's a PDF and then a presentation that's in there.
Okay.
Obviously the presentation doesn't wanna work, the PowerPoint doesn't wanna work with our smart board, so I'm gonna go through the PDF.
Alright.
I know that's format.
Alright.
Okay, well, we'll, we'll, for the sake of time, so this first chart, is it? Like that on your?
Yes, it is.
The app too?
Yep.
You can see it on the, on the?
On the PDF, you can see it correctly.
It's good, okay.
It is, the numbers are censored.
So. So they're good. Okay, um, so what this is, obviously a funding summary from, uh, FY nineteen and FY twenty. Um, we got a slight increase in chapter seventy, the required local contribution went up by about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars or so. Um, transportation, so regular transportation, special education transportation, and athletic transportation stayed the same, uh, for the most part, we actually found a little savings in, um, special education transportation, which reduced that amount a, a little bit, pennies compared to what, um, our budget is. Um, the override you'll see is the three oh five that was passed, I believe in two thousand and five, that's continued each year. Where last year was the three oh five and then additional money on town meeting floor. Um, in-kind will stay the same, um, that's our projection so far, and then on the bottom is our. And then on the bottom is our actual request, the school district's request to the town for FY twenty, which is about.
Eight and a half?
Yeah, it's about eight point five million dollars compared to last year's eight point seven million dollars. So a significant, you know, reduction in what we're asking for this year compared to last year, and we'll obviously get into those details. This is a pretty important slide, because this is where a lot of our work came between Cheryl, myself, and the leadership team on how to offset a lot of our operating budget and to use our revenues strategically, which allows us to kind of build this budget that is all-encompassing and will target a lot of areas that we need to for this year and going forward. So you'll see title, title one, title two A, and title four are what, and sped IDA, or what we call our entitlement grants. They're all formula-based, census data, free and reduce, there's a couple of different things, a handful of things that go into that formula. These, for the sake of this year's budget, because those numbers are not out yet, are level-funded, which means these are the amounts that we received in FY nineteen, we just carried those forward.
What's the total, million, three or so, is that?
Between what, all of this?
All of these.
Yes, yep, yep. DPH grant, it's not the DPH grant anymore, it was a DPH grant, actually Nancy can speak a little more to that when we get to that. It's a new grant that we had to apply for, we've technically had the funding in the past. Holyoke tuition, so Holyoke Public Schools sends a kid to our special education program, we charge them for that. So that's additional revenue that we, we have in FY nineteen, but we haven't had in other years. School choice, that's level-funded from last year, four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. We do have an increase in some choice in students. Those numbers aren't finally yet, so I didn't really wanna put those up there. And then circuit breaker, which is special education money, is level-funded compared to this year, which is three hundred and eighty thousand dollars. That is at the sixty-eight percent mark, which right now is what Governor Baker's budget is calling for. That number will get up to probably around seventy thousand dollars, or seven, seventy percent, which will be a few thousand more dollars in there. But for now, we're gonna keep it at that. So that's just a snapshot of the revenue that we will use to offset our asks this year on the local. Questions to this point, and I'll take questions, or we'll take questions as we go.
Yeah, so you said some of these are leveled, because you don't really know them, but what's the?
Correct.
So what's the risk of them going lower than what they are now?
So, that's a good question, so, and for the sake of this slide, I couldn't fit all the information in there, but we built projections on a three percent, five percent, ten percent increase, and then as well as a three percent, five percent, ten percent decrease. To answer your question, the likelihood of our entitlement grants going down is slim. We don't expect to see much increase in them, but I doubt highly we'd see any decrease in them. So the safe bet would be to level fund them for the sake of this, and we can adjust our budget as those numbers are finalized. Those numbers usually aren't finalized till June, July, so it'll be kinda late in the budgeting game for us to update you with those numbers, but when they do, we'll update our budget accordingly. Again, school choice, we know we have a few students that are coming in. We're not a hundred percent sure yet on what those numbers will be and what it'll equate to for the budget. So again, school choice, we're gonna leave it as level-funded, we know we can operate at that, at that level, so.
So if, if school choice numbers change during the school year, do we immediately start realizing that money?
No, no.
It's next year, right?
It'd be the next, it'd be the next year, or, or it'd be a.
I guess I asked it the wrong way.
Yes.
Is it too late for us to take advantage of these funds, additional funds, for next fiscal year? So if students come in today, March something, right? Are we still getting those funds, the five thousand dollar or whatever, per student in FY twenty, or is there a?
There's a, there'd be a cutoff date, yeah, as to where. So the, the students that I'm talking about, that we know are coming, have, they've met that.
Okay.
But yes, there could be additional ones that we might not recognize that until. Did that answer?
Yeah.
Question? Again, we, we, this is level-funded revenue, it's the safest projection that we could build, but it's not the only one we built. Like I said, we built different scenarios in an increase in revenue and a decrease in revenue. And these are our major revenue drivers.
Cool.
Good? So we've seen this.
I actually, since these are, are these inclusive of grants, or?
Yes, yes, yep.
So we've been talking about grants and all that, and I'm, you know, I'm glad that DPH grant is there, it's a new grant for us, isn't it?
So it's, so, I put DPH there because it's, might be familiar to other people, it's not called DPH anymore. They kind of reallocated it under a different, and again, Nancy can speak to this, under a different acronym, under different funding, but it's essentially DPH, so we have had it in the past.
Okay, we had it.
Yes.
So there's nothing new really here?
There's really no new funding here, and again, these are the major drivers for, for revenue.
And this doesn't include other grants that say you were able to get for STEM classes and stuff, okay.
Yep. Again, these are the most, again, the entitlement grants are from title one down to sped IDA, they're, you know, formula-driven. We're gonna get them year after year.
Okay.
But that is a good point, I'll make a note of that to put Project Lead to Weight in there, because that is a, that is a good point, because that will offset some of our local requests. Good?
Yep.
So this one, again, as I was saying, we've, we've seen this slide before, although we've added a little context to it. So how we're getting to where we wanna go, savings and efficiencies. So we've seen some salary savings through, most importantly, the salary schedule, going from a thirteen-step to an eighteen-step salary schedule, it's approximately thirty thousand dollars. And the retirement or attrition of some positions has equated to about eighty thousand dollars. Might not seem like a lot, but it's over a hundred thousand dollars in some savings that we can re-appropriate to other sections of the budget. Again, we talked about the reduce, reduction in special education tuition costs. It's approximately seven thousand, seventy thousand dollars that we now won't be paying to another district or another institution to educate one of our special education students. We can keep that money in-house and use it for students in our facilities. Facility savings, so this is a tough one to put a number around, but we will see, obviously due to the new building here and energy efficiencies, we will see some savings in oil costs, propane costs. It's a little too early now, as we're kind of midway, a little more than midway through the year, to see exactly what those facility savings will equate to, but having a school that's brand-new will lead to more efficiency. So we will definitely see some reduced facility costs. And then again, this is the big one, along with the slide previously, is effectively using our grants and revenue. I'm not sure they were used effectively in the past, and that was one of our focuses this year, is to make sure that we are using our grants properly. We're using circuit breaker and school choice properly, but also be cognizant that our goal is to keep in our revenue accounts, one year in, a year's balance. And we will be able to do that even with offsetting our local requests with these revenue accounts this year. So that's a, this isn't where all of our savings and efficiencies are coming from, but this is a big part of how we were able to save some money and kind of reallocate that to different portions of the local budget.
Were there any savings on the transportation savings going down to one school?
There was not, no, because then we'd still have to go grab, get those kids and bring them over to East Meadow.
Well, yeah, but you're, you're only going, you're going to one school, as opposed to.
Well, they, they consolidated the routes two years, not this school year, but the year before, so the realization was.
Yeah, no, I understand that, but it's still one less school. I don't know, I'm just.
Well, the, the drop was ju, the school was considered like a stop.
Yes, yeah, the routes are the same, that's how it goes by, is the routes and the school would have been a stop.
Question on the facility savings?
Yes.
With the energy grant that we're talking about, if we can get the boilers upgraded at the high school, would those savings be realized this year? In other words, will those boilers be changed in, within?
FY twenty? I don't believe so.
Okay.
I, I would have to follow up, we can make a note of that and follow up, I can follow up with Jay, but I don't believe so, I believe the, his application is in process. I don't think he was notified of what they were awarded yet, so I don't think it would go into effect until next fiscal year, but I will follow up with.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this slide? Again, we've seen this slide before, but we're putting some context to it, so the cost avoidance of the social-emotional learning program, and Carol, feel free to speak on this if you'd like to add some. All I did here was kind of put numbers to what we had told you guys a few weeks ago. It's pretty self-explanatory, so we send, this is based on sending four students on the left-hand side out to a private day placement. It's typically sixty, seventy-five, eighty thousand dollars, for the purpose of this, we used about sixty thousand dollars. Four students, to send them out to leave our schools for another institution to educate them, would be two hundred and forty thousand dollars just in tuition. Add on top of that the cost of transportation, and we're looking at about three hundred and twelve thousand dollars for us to send four kids out to another institution for them to be educated. Where we could very well just hire a one teacher at about sixty thousand dollars, again, these are kind of rough estimates, an adjustment counselor, half of adjustment counselor, three parent professionals, transportation, and integrate some hardware, software needs that they might need in between our walls, in our classrooms, with our staff, and it'd be a hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars. So there's savings right there of a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars where we would keep a kid in our district instead of sending him out. So that's another big piece of some of the savings that we will start to recognize as this, this program is built, and we don't have to send kids out to other institutions. Any questions, because I know this was.
I just have one quick question.
Yeah, yeah.
It's not so much the numbers, it's the students. We think we have four that would, that would fit this model, no, is that why we chose four? Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, so it's a good question, because I know we had that, that talk a few weeks ago, but we didn't really have any numbers to it. So I just, this was to illustrate the savings that it would be, not, not savings, the drastic reduction in cost if we kept these kids in, in-house and educated them our own.
Well, it is when, you know, depending on how we look at it, is savings in a way, if we did not have a structured learning program that didn't allow us to keep those students in-house, then we'd have to go out and pay the amount that you're seeing on the left-hand side.
Yep.
So it is, you know, we call it cost avoidance, cost avoidance to be more accurate, but basically, we could have, we could have paid a hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars more.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. And Carol can speak, Carol, when your special education asks and requests come up, can speak a little more to this, and kind of how it plays into that. But this was a, this was kind of a big driver in, in reallocating some of these savings elsewhere in the budget, so. Questions? Good? So this is just a real quick overview of the breakdown of how we get to our total number. You can see salaries and wages is seventy-five, eighty, eighty-five percent of our budget. So over seven million dollars for salaries, and just under two point three million dollars for expenses. Now that, someone's gonna ask me, that number doesn't add up to the eight point whatever million in the first slide. This is our total ask for the year, and then we'll get into what we use to offset some of that stuff. Our budget is primarily salaries and a little under two point three million dollars in expenses, and we'll get into that detail.
So are you saying that if you had two columns, one was all the costs associated, and the other side, the mitigating factors, when you put them together, the eight and a half million that you shared was basically some of the two?
Yeah, so, so this is what I would call, what we would call our operating budget, nine point two million dollars. That would, that's what it costs, everything included, to run the district for next year. And then we'll get into how we got to that eight point five million dollar number. And this just breaks down those projected salaries a little more. So we have special education, school administration, which is principals and assistant principals, regular ed teachers, parent professionals, nursing, lunch monitors, library media specialists, our guidance department, our custodians, which is one of those big categories that we offset with other revenue. Contractual stipends, whether you're, coaches aren't included in this, they're athletics, but class advisors, those stipends that are included in the contract that actually grow per the contract, clerical, and then central office staff. So that would include all the administrators in central office. This is really kind of just a, a, a high-level view of how we get to those salaries. And obviously, regular education teachers dominates, you know, this category. Questions?
Will we have, it's not related to this, but are we gonna have some charts that show, you know, a pie chart that shows the share of these different line items, also how they compare to previous year, or in fact, the last couple of years?
Okay.
Thank you.
Certainly. So again, we've, we've seen this slide before, but this is, again, I keep saying there's a lot that are most important, but this is most important. So these are asks for the year, and the biggest, the biggest asks that we have are in technology. And obviously, following Jeff Sun's report, there were some recommendations in there that we are lacking in technology, especially at the high school, and that we need to upgrade. So a lot of these budget requests are centered around technology implementation. One-to-one at the seventh grade, replacing some existing computer science lab computers with new ones, and converting some Windows-based computers that we currently have to Chromebooks, correct David?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So again, our focus this year on asks was in technology, and really getting the high school up to the standards of the middle school. We talked about increasing public communication and public engagement, and that's really us being more transparent and communicating more with the public. Again, that all-call for the public forum was a good example of what we'd like to be able to do as the school department.
So even though we mentioned mobile manage, sorry.
Yeah, no, it's good.
The mobile management device was related to the management of the technology that we have. But there's a mobile component to this as well, right?
So that mobile management device allow, would allow David or the technology department to roll out updates, security, those kind of aspects, so it, it's not an actual, I don't think it's an actual tangible thing. It's, it's a, a software that would allow us to, to protect and update our, our technology.
The engagement with community, just to put some, some, you know, substance behind that, you know, anything from website to apps that people can use to find out about school events and activities, or whatever's, you know, happening in schools, delays and all that stuff, that, that platform is going to be some part of that.
Yes.
On the focus on social, emotional, and physical well-being, so we've seen some of these costs already, because it's in that cost avoidance slide that I shared. Some of these things, like the parent professionals, are kind of in place already, but at a fraction of the cost for this year. So that would be the full cost to have that program up and running for next year. And then the last part, the proper resources, the same best possible learning environment. We talked about the map testing and some upgrades to the administration's computers in central office, because they are old and they won't run on older Windows versions anymore, so.
So just in case the term "map testing" throws some folks off, and so that we remember, it was related us, related to us being. It was related us, related to us being able to evaluate students in different ways, so we could identify opportunities for improvement and help them get even better, right?
Good, I'm gonna let Cheryl take on that, I'm not, I'm not diving into that. Um, any other questions, I know we've seen this before, but it's just important to.
Yeah, I have one, getting back to the public communication, does that also include the website?
Yeah, so that's gonna, yes, yeah, 'cause we've we've heard that the website is not very um.
User-friendly?
Easy to navigate, yes, yep, yep.
And I just had one. Yeah, so anything we do with regards to uh that IT thing that just, that we had tonight?
Mm-hmm.
Would have to be for next year, unless we could find some way to wiggle some professional development in.
Exactly, yep.
Through that, is that correct?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep.
Well, isn't that part of the reason why we wanted um the presentation to be made early enough in the budget season to see if there was anything that we could accommodate as far as that?
Yes.
Yeah, we kind of asked him to speed up the the evaluation process, so he could get us some results or some recommendations a little earlier than I think he originally wanted to. Um, but yeah, so that that one-to-one implementation is the hardware piece of it, but also the professional development piece, there is a professional development piece that will be a a big piece of that.
And where is that on on the ask?
We just got the report.
Yes.
Oh, okay.
So, part of the discussion tonight, I think, uh would be next steps to implement the technology plan, but it recognizing that we're under a short window. Um, you know, there is some potential to use the Title II A grant, which is professional development, depending on how we've used it this year, and focus it towards technology integration. Um, to use uh curriculum design and development time, uh hours of power with staff with a focus on integrating digital literacy skills. Um, you know, not at the lower levels, but more at the creation, problem-solving, collaborating, um. It's a, we got a lot of information in the report on Friday.
Now, I I already reached out to some, when I got the report on Friday, I reached out to some vendors um on Friday, and again today. Um, you know, awaiting some responses and some ideas and some proposals on some of those pieces we just learned of, you know, for when we can trust them, so the ball is rolling.
Okay, thank you.
So to answer your question, yes, we would hope that we would start to get some of that professional development done at the tail end of this year. Um, we're gonna have to dissect that report and and kind of do our due diligence before we we know the answer. Um, but we do have um, getting back to that report, so we do have one-to-one uh technology, the cost of that, of implementing that in our asks, which came from the report. And we also have a um, a figure for an extra data person, or if it's a contractual service. Um, but we do have that built in, which again was was part of Jeff Sun's um report, but it was a lot to dissect and a lot to kind of take in all at once, so. Um, that professional development piece will will come. Questions? Good?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, so now we're gonna get into um each department's um request. Now, we're not gonna get into the actual detail of their request, it's kind of just an overview of um their requests and what they amount to. Uh, I will say this, um we did meet probably a couple times, two or three times, uh myself and department heads, principals. Um, then we met with Cheryl, um we went through this budget um in some good amount of detail, and I appreciate their um. Their efforts with kind of going along with it, um for my first year, I know it's probably not what they were used to. Um, so I I do appreciate it, and I really, really do think that this budget um that you're gonna see is very well um thought out, and I think it is. Um, the best that we could um that we could propose. Um, so I thank them for their efforts, they are here to ask, to to answer any specific questions that you guys might have um pertaining to their um budget. I'll do my best to kind of explain it in in general, but if there's any questions or specifics that I can't answer, they are here to answer that. Um, so, the first one is athletics, um again, this is really a a high view, it's kind of self-explanatory, I will go through each of them. Um, transportation is forty-six thousand dollars, so um that's a figure that we get from um the town. So if there's ever any savings or leftover money at the end of the year in transportation, for the most part, it goes back to the town. So we kind of do our best to to be as accurate and um close with that number as we can.
What was the amount that went back to the town last year? Seventy-some thousand?
Around that, yes, but I I couldn't, if you want that, I can get it for you.
Yeah, I mean, it would be good to know that, these things sometimes go in different directions, and there are some savings at times, yeah.
Um, a trainer, EMT, so the trainers for, obviously, we need to have one for um our sports teams. Um, supplies, again, this is soccer balls, basketballs, um volleyball, so this year, we inherited a girls volleyball team, so we had to get some um supplies for that now. Actually, we're inheriting both the girls and a boys this year, um so we had to purchase supplies for that, so those are really the um. Equipment for sports teams, uh uniforms. Ally did a um a pretty good job of kind of going through uniforms and seeing what was old and what we could get rid of, and what teams needed some new uniforms. Um, so that's in there as well. Dues are, again, um if our wrestling team goes to duels, Ally, help me out here, what else would go into dues there? Some membership, okay, so some membership into, yep, yep. Um, contractual service, field maintenance, so I'll, pretty self-explanatory, um but field maintenance, we are actually, starting in the spring, we're gonna have a little better eye on the field maintenance. And hopefully, um, get those fields back there looking better than they have, although, and Ally can explain this, or talk to this, we had some compliments last fall about how good the fields looked. Um, so we'd like to kind of continue that, um so there's some money there for that, and a majority of her budget is for coaches, so these are for stipends for every coach in the athletic program.
I do have a question, so what was done differently than in the fall?
Um, well, we're treating on the right way, it was sporadic, um the treatments on the fields in the past. It's usually you follow a four-step program, I haven't learned a lot about treating fields um the past few years, something I was anticipating learning about, but. Um, roaming and cutting and watering, um it's not something that we're, we do often here is water our fields, which is huge. We um treat them when we go through this great program, um and we have been consistently now for the last two years. So we've been um watering and we could be watering more, um but we'll work on that piece, um maybe it'll rain a lot this spring, in summer. Um, but anyhow, uh we've been doing a treatment one through four step program consistently. We can't just do step one and then, oh, this year we'll do step three, next year we'll do step four, it has to be one through four.
And so who is grooming the fields for, you know, say the baseball fields? Uh, because there's a lot more than just mowing, mowing the lawn, there's.
We have, yes, oh, there is a lot more, um so the town does some of the mowing. And the maintenance crew will do some of the weed whacking and small care around the fields. And um the field committee is exceptional, and the field committee really comes out and helps out a lot. And those are local people in the town, um we do have contracted services with Andy Deacher, Country Lawn Care.
So, so I guess more specifically, is, has the budget been increased to accommodate some of these expenses? Because these, these, this was not budgeted in the past.
It has been budgeted in the past, it just was never used appropriately.
And/or you might not have seen it in the appropriate places, but it's it's certainly, it's certainly been there, um.
It just wasn't used appropriately, step one through four, it was a little bit of step one, a little bit of step four, following year, well, we did step one, now let's do step two. So it's used, it's being used appropriately now. And I say that not to raise concerns, I don't know where and what was really happening before I took over as the athletic director, but I can tell you that. If I have a line budgeted for field maintenance, I will use that money to treat our fields, and that's what I've been doing for the past couple years. And it's, we've gotten a lot of compliments, people calling the school to use our fields, because we're one of the only schools left with grass. And we actually had grass all the way through the soccer season, which was pretty incredible. Yep, and we put, yep, we invested in a nice rotation, so we took a year off of one of the fields, one full season, I'm actually really excited for the snow to melt. So we can see what the field looks like, 'cause we're getting a lot of um growth before they got covered in the snow. So we'll be moving one of our main fields back, so our focus is to limit the amount of fields, I think that, I can speak to this now, 'cause it's starting to come back. But before I had taken over, there was a lot of fields being treated, or half-treated, a little bit here and a little bit here, and we just had too many fields. So we have really condensed the amount of fields that we've used, and now we're focusing on sharing fields. So we have named one, like Varsity One and Varsity Two. So we have main field, the track.
Mm-hmm.
And then the one right next to it, it's like the new field that we've created, so now we have soccer and lacrosse that share. So we don't have, you know, our um, boys aren't in the desert in lacrosse, we've pulled them out to the desert. Um, the girls are not down on Maximilian, they're back here, so we're using the f- the fields appropriately in the space.
So, couple things, so that field maintenance, that that number, we're actually um working with Andy Deacher now, so the test sites for the well. Are strategically placed um in the um area of, it's right field for the baseball?
Right field, that's the biggest one.
Field, um so within a hundred um feet circumference around, we can't treat anything, so. We thought maybe we could go organic, it can't be organic, we can't treat any portion of that field that's in, within a hundred feet of the well. Um, because of regulations, so we're we're trying to work with uh John Sullivan and Andy Deacher, who provides us the um. The program, the field maintenance program, on how we can kind of get around that and still make everything look great, but it's been challenging. Um, also, I'm not sure if everyone's aware, but we have a brand-new scoreboard that will be going up, uh hopefully, a couple, if we don't get any more snow and this um mild weather continues. Um, so Ally and I have kind of been working on just real high-level, reaching out to local companies and donating to put signs up. Um, anything to generate a little revenue to to help offset um the athletics, so um. I drove around one day on lunch and came up with about sixty places, I think just on two oh two that we could reach out to. Um, we got some good feedback from other districts on their policy um that they use, so we're gonna, we're gonna take that into account. And and hopefully, start generating some revenue again to offset um some of these costs. But the field has been, or the fields, um were a pretty big focus of ours when we we put this budget together.
How how long is your lunch break?
Well, you know, you won't go there, you won't go there, um any other questions? So this is tough at the bottom, sorry, so Ally's total asks are a hundred and forty-six thousand, a little over a hundred and forty-six thousand. Um, again, with a lot of it going to paying the coaches, um the transportation, um.
So when our teams go to playoff games and stuff, is it, is it anticipated here in this cost, so if if they end up not going, we?
I have a, I know it's a stupid question, but it's my first time through this whole budget thing, so. This hundred and forty-six and all these other ones, are they already built into the budget that we've seen on the other slides, or are these additional?
Yeah, no, 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 this is just, yes, yes, yes.
I was like, wait a minute, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
No, it's a good question, it's a good question.
We've been working a lot.
Any other questions? Uh, next is facilities, um again, these are pretty self-explanatory, but I will say there are a few um. Increases in some of these line items, and one of them, right off the bat, is water testing, so we have um. The wells now that service both the high school and the uh the new middle school here, so there are. Because we're early in the process, there is a lot of testing that is going on and that will have to continue going on um in the future, so we've accounted for what we think that might cost. Um, there's some standard tests that happen, I don't know if it's once, once a month or quarterly, but they're they're incorporated into that. Um, maintenance vehicles, um that is, um we have one vehicle that the school department purchased, was it last year? Whatever it is, that's registration, um any type of maintenance that we can, that that we need to keep up that vehicle, so we can prolong the life of it, um, yeah.
Questions on heating of buildings and electricity?
Yep.
Um, so heating, is it fair to say that it may go down a little bit, because we don't know really how much it's gonna cost to heat? And we're almost, you know, hopefully, we're close to the end of.
So the heating of buildings, that line contains uh the cost of the oil and the cost of propane, so. Um, at the high school, there is um oil, here in the new facility, there is two oil tanks and a propane tank. The propane tank was um is for the swing season, which we're about to get into, to kind of keep the school up to temperature, and the oil burners don't have to be running.
Yeah.
We've had some problems with um how that's been running in this new building, so that's why I said that the the cost this year for oil and propane might be a little. Um, elevated, because there's still some some tweaks that we're working out here, um but that would be where some facility savings would be.
And electricity, um didn't we add more LED lights?
Yes, yep.
So, is that anticipated in this line, or could it be lower because?
It it's not, I mean, I'm not sure, I I'm not sure until probably this time next year if we had a full year's.
Okay.
Data to see what our actual savings is, so I I wouldn't even know.
So twenty-one may show some.
Yeah, some savings, yeah, okay, yep, yep. Um, and then to finish that up, the social supplies and contracted services, now the contracted services is a a lot of vendors that we um do work. That do repairs that John Sullivan just might not be able to do, or don't have the manpower to do. Um, but for the most part, this uh this budget stays the same as all departments did, we might not recognize some savings in the energy efficiency categories until next year.
Okay.
Questions? Oh, so, sorry, so the total ask for uh facilities, you can see, is a little over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's already put into the budget, that's not on top of everything else that we're.
I get it now, I won't have to pay more than that.
So, um, there's really not much here, um but we will go through it, travel, um that's for um Nancy and her staff to attend conferences. Certifications, tho- those type of things, um supplies, that's literally Nancy gave me every nursing supply that she would need down to like rolls of tape, so that's probably. The most detail that I got, which is great. Um, and then contracted services, Nancy, I don't know if you wanna speak a little more about exactly what contracted services are, but it's a majority of our budget, so.
Uh, we have electronic health records through um a system called SNAP that is um was created by school nurses for school nurses. So last year, we went on the cloud, because in the past, what was happening was our system was only accessible at particular bil- uh computers in a building. So you could only access it in clinic, you couldn't get it on a laptop, so if we were helping another nurse screen, you couldn't uh screen beside her. You had to literally go back to your own clinic and put in all the data, so we went on the cloud, that increased our cost for contracted services as well as. Um, having our equipment calibrated on an annual basis, um such as blood pressure cuffs. And our um screening equipment, such as the hearing machines and vision machines, it's all have to be calibrated annually. So, um that's part of our overall budget, and then um during the year, if things break, they need to be repaired. Um, we have the vendors, and we have to go to them to do that.
So one of the good things that actually came out of this, and it was a minimal savings, how much did that SNAP program cost in the past, was around three thousand dollars?
No, prior to it being hosted, it was about a thousand, now it's about three thousand.
Okay, so I'm not sure what the cost was, but we found that um Nancy actually had it budgeted on her side, and David had it budgeted in his um, in his ask. Again, it's not a lot of money by any means, but um it it's important to to note those things as we go through the process, that that those were the types of things that we were able to eliminate as we went, as we went through the budget. that, that those were the types of things that we were able to eliminate as we went, as we went through the budget.
You speak with the grant.
Yes, actually, yes. You, yes, please.
So, um, the last fifteen years, the Department of Public Health has helped provide, um, funding. Um, so about ninety, about forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars to the district for nursing. Currently, right now, a majority of that, about forty-two thousand is paying salaries. And then we have, um, two partner schools that I mentor, uh, one is Hatfields, the other one is Smithville, who get, um, a total of six thousand dollars between the two of them a year. And then there's other smaller items like, um, being able to pay the co- the school nurse leader, conferences that I have to attend in Westboro, um, and professional development. The fifteen-year cycle ends, uh, June thirtieth. So back, um, in November into December, while I was on leave, the, um, nursing staff and I, we, we worked with Cheryl and Carol, were writing for the next grant cycle, which we are to find out very shortly in the next couple of weeks, um, what that's gonna look like. Um, there were different parameters with this grant. It's about seventy thousand dollars that we wrote for. Um, we could no longer pay for nursing salaries under the grant, um, if they, if nurses are providing direct service. Um, we could only put it into a case management, non-direct service status. So, um, because we feel like, uh, that is something right now that the nurses can handle, but need additional support through guidance, we also, with this grant, had the opportunity to, um, bring on more guidance and, um, social-emotional staff into health workers. So our proposal with the grant was that, um, one position would be paid for an adjustment counselor, and then a part-time social worker would be split between the two schools, um, as part of the seventy thousand dollars. With that, we do have requirements that we have to meet with these, um, employees that would be hired under the grant. Um, so attendance is a huge thing. Now, with the state, they would be responsible for helping with attendance, helping with soc- social-emotional issues, um, with like mental health, L- LGBTQ, all of these other, um, facets that involve social-emotional help. Um, so hopefully we'll be finding out about that shortly. This grant cycle ends, um, in, um, four years from July first. And we have the other opportunities, two-year periods, to, um, apply again. So that would be a total of a ten-year cycle of, um, possibly of this seventy thousand dollar grant to find these positions. Um, we will still have to do our monthly reports to the Department of Health. Um, I will be responsible for overseeing these individuals because they follow under the grant bracket, and I'm responsible for ensuring that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. Um, we will also have to make sure that we're, um, submitting our annual report to DPH to en- ensure that we are remaining compliant with the grant. Um, so that will involve nursing and guidance working together to ensure that we're collecting the correct data. Um, but we're hopefully getting it. Grant has been great about making sure that we're handling, handing our reports in in time and doing, um, CQI projects and really, um, you know, being involved. So we're hoping that we're, we're getting it. Um, I ha- I go to Westboro on, uh, Wednesday, so we're hoping that afterwards, when, um, that meeting's over, we'll be finding out in a few days. So...
Thank you, Nancy.
Um, so Nancy's ask was, um, a little over thirteen thousand dollars, uh, this year. But the grant, um, plays a, a big part in, um, in her department. That's one of those grants that we showed on the website that we're not sure yet, uh, if we're gonna get it. So things might change, um, a little bit if we, if we don't get it. So that's one of those ones where, yeah, we're, we're keeping our fingers crossed and, and hoping, um, and, and we'll, we'll say. Um, if we don't get it, we will, we will, um,
Adjust.
make adjustments accordingly. Um, so the next one is technology. So here's, um, where a lot of the big asks, or the big ask, um, comes in. You can see telephone, um, that's obviously telephone lines, um, for the district stipends. This did increase, um, compared to last year. Um, and what this is, is to have some technicians, um, here and at the high school over the summer. And David, step in when you would like to, um, kind of clean up anything with computers, software, kind of some, perform some, some maintenance to, to our, um, infrastructure while it's, while it's quiet.
Correct. I, I, every, any responsible organization, schools included, do some, perform some type of, uh, summer maintenance on their equipment, um, to keep the equipment running optimally, but more important, to keep the security up to date. A lot of important security patches are updated and remediated during the summer months. Um, we've been doing this for quite some years, but with all the new equipment in this building, it's gonna take some, um, extra help to get it all done. Right now, if you add up all of our laptops, PCs, and Chromebooks, um, we're talking, you know, about eight hundred and fifty pieces of equipment that have to be serviced during the summer. Um, that's a lot of work to get done in a short window of time.
So again, this, this did increase. I think it almost doubled, uh, close to that. Again, now we have Jeff Sun's report, so some of that might play into either reducing this cost, adding to this. Um, but this would be for a couple technicians to, to perform some maintenance and some service. Um, instructional software, instructional hardware. So again, that's where they ask for one-to-one, and the district operating the admins, um, computers comes in. And then, uh, contractual services. So there's a bunch of different vendors in here. David, I don't know if you would mind just maybe highlighting a few of the, the top vendors that we use in that contractual services line and, and real quick, what they, what they do for us?
Well, the big, yeah, the biggest vendor is probably the Acuity. And we spoke, uh, a couple months ago about the need to, um, uh, change our work relationship with them, uh, because the industry is always changing. So they're gonna take, we're, we're gonna be, um, implementing a managed service contract where some of the most critical pieces of equipment in the district that are required to run the district, such as the firewall, um, content filter, the critical servers, um, critical administrative, um, workstations, will have a, um, uh, multiple eyes on them and a professional dashboard. Um, there'll be enrollment professional dashboard with engineers that can monitor them and take action more proactively rather than us waiting for something to fail and then hoping an engineer or technician's available to come out that day or the following day. Um, some of these things need to run twenty-four seven, and just having something down for a day, uh, stops the operation of the school. Um, we've been kind of limping along for quite some years without such a contract, despite the fact that most organizations have, have one. Um, we've done some creative things to try to get by, but those are not the responsible way to, to handle that, um, that, um, or reliable. So, so that, that, that's a big piece. There is the, the Acuity contract. Then we have some smaller ones, you know, we, we, we have, uh, contracts with, uh, for security software. For, we have two different antivirus companies that, um, we use. We're not duplicating antivirus on computers, but we have, de- depending on the computer, um, and, um, where it's located, it either gets one antivirus software or another, so we have to pay for those, uh, those contracts. There's some other security software that comes from a company called Phorolix, um, which most, a lot of people in education work with, and even in the private sector, some companies use that. So th- those are some of the big hitters. Any questions I can...
So Da- David's budget probably is one of those ones that I'm gonna say will change, again, based on us dissecting Jeff Sun's report and, and acting on that accordingly. Um, so, right now, this is, this is where it stands. Thank you, David, for, for that. Um, but the big part of this is implementing one-to-one at the high school, at the, or middle school, at the seventh grade level. Next is the high school. Again, there's not much, um, here. I, I will say that, uh, there's not really a lot of asks above and beyond what had, you know, for all the departments, on what they've had in previous years. Um, I think it was a couple things came into play. One, we did a really good job, and, and I thank them again for kind of sitting down and going through line by line, um, what the school needs, what they've needed in the past, and maybe some things they can do without. Um, and also, I think we have a really good handle on where we're at in the current fiscal year that will, um, maybe help us, um, buy some things towards the end of this fiscal year and take some, um, pressure off of, of next year's budget. So those two key factors kind of helped us, um, get to a real tight level service budget. So again, I appreciate their efforts and, and I thank them. So there's really not much to see here. Um, classroom supplies, um, that's standard to be the majority of a budget at a, at a junior, senior high school. Um, I know Steve had asked for some, uh, graphing calculators, um, some updated texts. Um, but for the most part, it's, it's kind of business as usual. Um, we do have Project Lead the Way grant, which we will add, and there will be, um, some additional components that, um, that we'll need at the high school. But there's really, unless I'm not missing anything, there's really not much, um, above and beyond what we've had in the past here at the high school. The big thing was, was replacing some texts, some, um, and we've talked about having a curriculum review team, so I think that's all, that's all part of it. Um, but again, this is, this is a straightforward and, and, um, a very tight and, and well-developed budget.
I have a question on that. Um, the textbook stuff. We're talking about technology, and I think I asked a similar question. And we're, you know, we're talking about cost avoidance in the context of, uh, special education. Is there a similar type of cost avoidance or, uh, kind of shifting the cost to another medium? If we say we're gonna have Chromebooks, but we're not gonna have, uh, the old traditional paper textbooks anymore? Is that, is that a, is that one way of looking at it?
Some of the te- textbooks that, um, we have currently, and we would look into buying, come with the, it comes as digital bundles, so you get like digital access to the text as well. Um, but they make it so, like, right now, where we are, we couldn't just do the digital bundle. So like, to buy the text with the bundle, it's like a six-dollar per book or maybe less difference. They make it s- but if we could just go digital, then there could be a fairly significant savings, especially if we could invest in like a three- or five-year license rather than going year to year.
Okay. Thank you.
So I'll be honest, I actually asked the same question as we were going, I asked it to David and, and to, um, Stephen. We're moving to one-to-one, or at least that's our hope. Do we need textbooks anymore? What is, what does that mean? What does one-to-one really mean? I think people hear one-to-one, oh, you have a computer, so that's all you have now. You don't have a textbook. At least that's what I thought. I didn't know. So I asked the question. So thank you for, uh, for clarifying that. Um, well, Bill has a brand-new school, so we'll go to the ne- no, East Meadow. Um, honestly though, there's really, there's really not much in here. Um, you got a brand-new school. Um, again, a lot of it is, is classroom supplies. Um, I don't know, Bill, just because you've sat here for so long, maybe you could take a, a few seconds to talk about what it's been like so far this year in the, in the building and, and how that's gone.
I honestly forgot what you were saying. Um, so one of the things you were just talking about on our end, especially with textbooks, unfortunately, um, if we buy, if the digital is the same as the textbook, and if we buy the text, they usually give us the digital for free, the license at this level. So there's really no savings there. But, you know, we're looking at that, and we're, that's part of the, what we're gonna be looking at over the next couple of years and stuff with the curriculum process and things like that. Um, the good news is, we're up forty-three students or forty-four students. The enrollment continues to increase. We're at three ninety-nine right now, um, as of March, so...
Wow.
Yeah, uh, the enrollment continues to climb, and the morale just, I think, you know, it continues to, to, to climb and, and, um, you know, people that come in and visit can't notice what a happy feeling is. And, and even Cheryl today was like, I just love the world here, because it's just, she said it's, it's just so light and it's so happy. And, you know, um, I, I think the, the building has lent itself to that. And, uh, it's amazing the process that we went through, um, with the building committee and that it's been three years getting to this point, you know, since I've been here, but well worth it. And the town should really be proud of that. And just this room alone and, and, you know, hearing some of the, the tech report is a little tough because the teachers are doing a lot. They're working really hard. And, and I tell them all the time, you know, that they've done a lot in a short amount of time. They've built a brand-new beautiful school, and that's something they should be proud of. First and foremost, was that building and getting us to where we are. And now they are having their professional learning communities on the next steps. And they're spending a lot of time on technology and, and the websites to use and share with families. And I think this year, we've seen a lot more community share going on. There's been a lot more parents coming in. There's been a lot more teachers doing, uh, family engagement things. And, um, we're gonna have, uh, ELL Family Literacy Night coming up, and we're gonna have, uh, a school-wide family literacy math night coming up in April. So, you know, those are all good things. And our budget pretty much stays the same, you know, the, the increase. And I think what we saw with our autism support program, uh, that we had a couple of years ago, is amazing. That program has, has proven to be, I, I wouldn't put it against anywhere in the state, the program that we have going on right now. When you see the growth with those students, and I think, you know, our social-emotional classroom can be the same way. Um, you know, we already have a couple students here that will be in that program. Um, and, you know, they're grand new residents, and I think it's just gonna make a great addition. So, you know, what you see there, classroom supplies is our biggest, um, cost. But that includes our, um, you know, math workbooks and our science workbooks and, and a lot of the tangibles that they use every day in the classroom. So please don't think of that as pens or pencils and, and mining supplies like that. It's a lot of the spell, a lot of the consumables that they use every year with the students, and, and they get a lot of use out of them. And there's some technology costs in there as well. There's some websites that we subscribe to and some things like that. So that's all wrapped into that.
So I have a question. So the classroom supplies, you're talking about them consumables. Is that why they're not listed as textbooks? Because they, you know, your, the student gets it, alright.
Yeah, so... It's more of an instructional supply.
Yeah, you can't, e- e- especially budget-wise, you can't really call that a textbook.
Yeah.
And especially with, like, um, you know, you can't, it's, it's not really a, a capital expense. It's not really a long-term expense, because it's a one-year...
Well, I know. She comes home with the pages ripped out of the book. Like, I understand. I just didn't know how it was framed. So, 'cause I thought the textbook cost seemed small for the school, but now I understand it's because it's a different kind of textbook. Whereas in the high school, they're, they're getting the books and they're gonna use them. You know, three or four classes or more will use them.
And they do a lot with the online for math, um, with those.
Right, right. Okay.
But I think you're bringing up a great point that if we don't know what it is, then supplies are supplies, especially when we say classroom supplies. It may be a good thing for us to really qualify, you know, what's included in there. Thank you for that. Yep.
Thank you, Bill. Special education. So this is probably the biggest piece, um, to the budget. Um, and, and Carol and I went through this pretty good and, and found some savings, um, along with kind of bringing that social-emotional program into, um, the district. Um, again, this is pretty self-explanatory. Um, the tuitions, again, I can get you more detail as to how many students we send out for that number. Um, Carol might even have a, a, kind of an estimate off the top of her head, but we can see that the tuitions, the kids that we're sending from our schools out, what those costs are. And they're, they're kind of non-negotiable and they're astronomical. Um, and it puts a tremendous strain on our budget. Um, with that being said, Carol and I did find some savings in some, um, students that are aging out, um, that won't be attending, uh, at a district placements anymore, where we save, um, some transportation savings. But a, a, a lot of this is, um, tuitions to other schools, um, for services that we can't provide in-house yet, and we're, we're... Get to that point.
When it says non-public, is it non-public schools, or is it, could it also be institutions that are not?
They're private, um, private-day schools.
Okay.
Because you can send students to public schools if they have a program.
Like Holyoke is sending...
Our structured learning, you know, we have interest in other districts, um, to...
Good. Thank you.
So, so those other, so, so those other things you were seeing earlier, they're not on this page because of more salaries than they are?
Yeah, so they're, yes, exactly. Yep. They're, they're, they're built in to the salary portion, um, of the budget.
That's what I was wondering.
Yep, yep. Questions? I know it's getting late, so you guys are... Questions? I know it's getting late, so you guys are, I think we're almost, we're almost there. Um so again, this is, this is, in the district, I put everything that didn't fall into the previous departments. So actually, in here is, um the school committee does get a a budget, although it's not that large. Um I don't know if I separated it out, but.
Four thousand.
Yes, it's four thousand, yep. Um I'll go real quick. Tuition reimbursement, so we we offer our uh teachers the chance to get reimbursed for um college courses, um so that's that. Um travel did increase um this year compared to last year, only because there are um some things for certifications, travel that I do need to um attend to keep up CPEs as well as Cheryl, so that that increased a little bit. The school committee lined four thousand. Retirement c- uh contingency, um in the past, it's been fifteen or twenty thousand dollars. Um so we found some savings there. Office supplies, that's really just some general supplies to to for the district office. Um legal services. The late bus, I wasn't really sure where to put this, but this late bus, I believe maybe Bill and Carol can really quickly talk about it. It's the bus for um extended learning, correct?
So yeah, that's more for us in the high school activity.
Okay.
And it was always, it was part of, it used to be part of the after-school activities program budget. Um but without that um program, um you know, we still have students that could benefit from that late bus transportation and staying after school. You know, looking at that for at least once a week where our hope is to get some sort of an after-school activity program going again over here, but not have to charge for the transportation piece of it. And if students stay for extra help after school, we also don't feel that they should have to pay the extra for that um late bus as well. You know, we're doing a lot more with tuition recover- uh attendance recovery and and whatnot, with students staying after we tutor and things like that. So this goes along with that.
A- as Adam said, it's getting late, but can we talk about that after-school uh program uh next time? Thanks.
Uh so real quick, just to finish this out. So instructional materials, that's um, again, we talked about a a curriculum review committee, um some type of team, so that would be um, again, this might not be the best place to have it, but some type of professional development materials um that we can implement. The food service contingency, um it's at sixteen thousand um based on their um presentation tonight and the close work that I'm doing with Ken. Um I'm hopeful that we might not have to use that, but we'll see. Do some memberships, contracted services, the community involvement, so that is the new piece that we are um putting in there for website, the app, everything. Questions on districts? So here's really the the main um slide, and I'm not gonna go through every number. It's kinda self-explanatory, but what it does is kinda just a quick capture of last year kinda at this point where we are preliminary. Um it says final, but it's really at this point last year to where we are this year. Um and you'll see, the big thing is is the offsets. Um there were no offsets used in balancing the budget in as much um research that I've done last year to offset the the budget, where this year we've really focused on that to um. Our ask is a little under nine-point-three million dollars. Again, that's the total operating budget to operate the district, salaries, expenses, everything. Um a- and we've used the offset, our revenue, our grants to kinda um limit the the amount of strain that we put on there. So we're asking this year um from the town eight-point-five million dollars. Again, this is preliminary. This is just based on the governor's budget. Um there are some things in here that might change, in-kind costs could go up or down, they could fluctuate. Um the house budget could change and then grant revenue could change, but for right now, where we stand, um we're asking them, you know, about eight-point-five million dollars for FY twenty.
Which based on what I'm reading is that at the very least, we're not asking for additional funds from the town.
No, we will go to the town with the balanced budget.
So, w- so I have one more. We we, I asked earlier about the possibility of some of those um some of those other ones were um, you know, leveled from what they were this year.
Grants and revenue?
Yeah.
Yep.
But so is the in-kind, so how how likely is that one, if it's gonna change?
So we did receive in-kind today. Um didn't really have a a chance to review it in depth. So what we did was just um level fund it compared to last year. So that that will change. It won't be by much. Um again, the grants, we get late notice, it's over the summertime. So um that'll be more of some accounting on my end, on our end, to kinda offset the impact of of that revenue that we won't know before uh town meeting.
Well, I just, I'm I'm just trying to figure out the worst-case scenario for, you know, cause right now you're at zero.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm. Um. Well, so yeah, there there's not, but but again, we're 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 using our offsets strategically. Um so a- any impact that would um result in us getting less revenue, um cause we're not gonna get any less revenue from the state. Historically, once the budget passes through the house, you get a little bump, a little increase in the budget. So we wouldn't see it there. Where we would see it is in our entitlement grants. Um circuit breaker, depending on how that that passes, um but we, it says zero, meaning that we're going to town meeting with our balance, with our budget balance. We we do have some little room in our offsets to continue to have a balanced budget, whatever whatever circumstances might happen.
Okay, I guess that answers my concern, right?
Do, if not, just the, I I can be, we're, I I guess I'll say this, our offsets, we're not tapped out at that offset number. So we're not using everything we have and reserves, and now if something happens where we're gonna have to, you know, we're we're in kind of a crisis mode of balance, we we we, we're strategic and we we should be able to accommodate whatever changes come.
Thank you, Adam. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
That's the most inspirational of the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
Very detailed.
Yep.
Very good on this one.
Yes.
Well, if you liked it, we'll do it again next time.
Thank you, guys. Sorry, I just, uh, thank you to you guys for uh.
Thank you very much. And thank you all very much for your contributions.
Yes, thank you.
Yes, thanks, everybody.
Have a good night. Thank you. All right, um Cheryl, you had a report?
Okay, uh so this week, um we've had a very busy few weeks in Granby. Uh we celebrated Edric Cousinot as he earned the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents Academic Excellence Award. Uh we heard about him as student of the month previously. Principal Sullivan and myself traveled to WPI to participate in the Project Lead the Way Grant Award Meeting. Um we didn't win any prizes for engineering a fabulous straw tower. It fell over several times, um but we certainly had fun learning how to fail and how to learn from our failure, which as you talked about, yes, um when you listen to Jeff, um one of the things I take away, which isn't really clear, is when we talk about engaged and motivated students and flexible students, we're talking about students who are willing to take those risks, will- willing to work together, laugh when something doesn't go exactly correct, and learn from that. Um and so certainly Stephen and I had quite fun doing that. I think if I was on my own, I would've maybe had a a tower, but that's okay. Um he wanted the base to be too big, like we only had so many straws, you know, and he, so he put it all in the circle at the bottom. And I, well, anyway, you can take a look at the picture when I put it up on the website. Um uh the legislative meeting with um our Senator Lesser, Representatives Dom and Carey, provided another avenue to challenge our legislators to make funding public schools a priority in the upcoming legislative session uh that happened at the Log Cabin last Friday. Uh there is absolutely mutual agreement about the need to fund rural and small districts in addition to fully funding the Foundation Review Committee's proposals to address resource shortages in the system, which we've talked about a million times, but mainly come in increased healthcare costs, increased retiree um benefits and um increased um costs in general that make Adam and I and you all have very difficult decisions about moving resources out of instruction and to fixed costs, um that should be covered in the review foundation formula. And then finally, congratulations to our boys and girls basketball teams that both made it to the state tournament. Um our teams and their fan sections left nothing on the courts or in the bleachers. And congratulations to Nora Young, Tristan Berger, Julia Frappier, and Summer Mullen for being honored at the thirtieth annual high school all-star banquet at Lusitano Club in Ludlow, well-known for their soccer, and we had four girls there, so congratulations to them. Um they were awarded for their outstanding uh soccer play this year.
Cool. Congratulations to them. That's awesome. Um we finished our budget conversation, but I wanna make sure that we uh remind ourselves and everyone else that part of the good news that is related to the budget is coming from the fact that we have more students. So we return, we kinda uh turn that tide and hopefully it continues. And um that happens with a lot of work, but that is sustained with continued uh support and good news. So we have to continue to support our schools to make sure that uh we'll maintain, in fact, increase those numbers as we're expecting that will happen uh next year, so thank you all. Um we have standing reports, but I'm not sure that any of the committees uh collaborative did not have anything. Okay, so uh I don't know that any other uh subcommittee had any meeting. And we're not gonna have uh an executive um session tonight. Is there anything that should be on the agenda uh for next meeting?
I wanted to ask.
Or anything that you guys wanted to talk about next meeting?
About mindfulness, if the public hearing is the twenty-fifth.
Yep.
Do we want to have mindfulness on that agenda or can we wait until April?
Isn't it just a a status update?
I thought you wanted the data, the data from Mind Up report to go through that and a status update of what we're doing currently.
Well, I was just asking for a status update.
Oh, we can do a, I can do a status update right now.
Okay, that would be good.
Okay, so um we are extending mindfulness uh training here at East Meadow. Um we had to do a little bit of um wiggling uh with how that was presented, but we're training teachers in grades uh four through six uh with Kate Forrest, um the same training that happened at Granby Junior Senior High School. It's extremely well-received. We're very excited. Um teachers are working together to learn the strategies of self-care for themselves and then we'll be working as a group to implement those strategies in classrooms for children. Um on March Tuesday, the nineteenth, I believe it is, um Kate will be presenting a family-community um self-care workshop and so we're hoping that um anyone in the community of Granby would attend and learn about self-care for themselves, but the work that we're doing in the district um to promote um a very important part of social-emotional learning that I think gets left behind. Um you know, we talk about tiered intervention, we talk about behavior plans, we talk about all of these things and we don't build a real strong foundation of, for students to think about self-care and um how to function in a in a high-stress and in a high-anxiety environment that we're encountering now.
So the pilot, as it was presented to us at, for East Meadow, is going to be executed in grades four through six?
Three, I apologize. Yes, it's three through six.
Three through six.
Yep.
And it's a ten-week program this time.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yep.
And.
And it started.
Oh, it already started?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. Started with the teachers last week, I believe.
And so the teachers that um did the pilot program at the junior, senior high school will also be included?
Yes, so there's some online support that's continuing. Um Kate has reached out to them um to continue support through the online environment, but there will also, when the group comes together, um those uh that participated for Granby Junior Senior High School are are going to come over here.
Because I know that was the, some of the committee members' concerns, making sure that there was still.
Yeah.
Right.
Yep.
And so then will there be another formal presentation made to the committee once this piece is complete?
If the committee would like, yes, absolutely. Um we're already in discussion as the leadership team of planning this to be a pre-K twelve um part of our professional development plan for August. So trying to work with um the data that we already have, the feedback that we already have, and design um differentiated uh professional development. So working with perhaps some train-the-trainer folks who have been early adopters and um seen real success in their classrooms, working with them to become train-the-trainers, um and or um providing more um training to teachers who've already received and then uh initial training for teachers who would be new to the program.
So the Mind Up program, is that in in the younger grades?
Yes, yep.
So is that um pre-K through second or is it kindergarten through second?
I, it was pre-K. So there's been quite a bit of discussion with Nancy, although she left, but um regarding how to use um self-care and mindfulness with Mind Up. Um I know that there was some concern about why would we do one thing at one level and then another at a different level. I think the lessons of Mind Up um give kids vocabulary and knowledge and then self-care, they can blend together.
Mm-hmm.
And teachers are already starting to talk about how that could, um how that could happen in in the younger grades. Yeah, it's it's like, I'm so excited.
Good.
Actually, you're doing a series of like, the one-minute lesson, this is good. Um the Mind Up wasn't as well-received.
Right, yeah.
As um this particular program is.
Well, that's how, that's mindfulness in general. It has to be done in very small doses because our mind is like an untrained puppy. You know, it's just all over the place and.
I think the way it was presented, Hannah, by the presenter, also made a huge difference, just her.
Yeah, oh, she's fantastic, yeah.
I think they're starting to see the benefit to themselves.
Mm-hmm.
Um and to their teaching and to their instruction and how that will roll over into when we're teaching it um as part of our classroom cultures, that it is important to take time to center yourself, to be present. Um you know, to manage stress and anxiety.
Very good. That's really all I was looking for.
Sorry, I I thought you were looking for the Mind Up data. I'm sorry. I misunderstood. So do I, can I take that off the agenda now?
Yes, absolutely.
Awesome, okay.
Mike has a question.
Yeah, so so how soon until you think we can be ready to talk about that technology report? I mean, I, there was an awful lot of stuff there.
Yeah.
But I don't wanna lose any of it either, right? So is it two weeks, a month, like?
Well, if we took mindfulness off the agenda, then we have plenty of time.
Yeah.
So we have that technology, I know it's, I think it's me, you, David, and the principals.
Next week.
Next Monday.
Yeah.
I don't know what the point of that was, but I I was assuming it was to kinda.
Yeah, it's to talk about.
Talk about.
Some of the details of how to, it, yeah, it's like the strategic plan. It really needs to be flushed out in all kinds of ways. And I do think that his um recommendation around a community work group to get together to sort of peel the layers of the onion, um so that we have a plan that, you know, everyone is comfortable with, um that's fiscally doable, um professional development, you know, as he was speaking, I was like, well, you know, if we did in September, some of the training around uh the techno- the knowledge pieces that he was talking about all year long, we can do hours of power or curriculum days around embedding di- digital literacy in lessons and units. Um but it's, you know, I think the first step really is is bringing that community group together.
Right. I think the structure around that, I'm still not clear what that means.
I mean, he'll he'll come back if you would like me to ask him to come back for.
Well, as he suggested, I think what I'm gonna do, I'm just gonna Google some tech plans and see how it translates to a plan like that. Uh what really, what really uh intrigued me is that, you know, you can't just say, hey, you know, we're gonna have one-on-one Chromebooks everywhere and it's gonna solve the thing. In fact, the digital education part, right, did you, it is is the biggest, bigger part, but that's gonna require a lot more conversation than just investment in technology.
Yes.
Because it has to translate into how we deliver education, how we uh uh transform our curriculum.
Personalized learning, yep.
So all that stuff. And uh you know, that could. And, uh, you know, that could well-fit in some of these items that we already have in our strategic plan,
Yes.
but it's gonna require some conversation, uh, that would be, that would be great. If, uh, Dave, if you wanna be involved in those conversations as well from a technology perspective, that would be great. So, we can better understand how those pieces come together. And before I forget, not to interrupt this one, if there is more conversation, thank you, Deanne and Cheryl, on, uh, all the work that you've done, uh, on mindfulness. Uh, cause I, I don't know that there is any week that goes by without me bumping into some high-profile article from across the country that is focusing on mindfulness, how, how it's becoming a focal point in education. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm very happy, in fact, proud that, you know, we have something that we started focusing on and we started building, uh, you know, in a very constructive way, but in a, in a very mindful way, no pun intended, uh, to, to benefit the students and teachers, you know, everyone in our school district, so thank you for that. Anything else? Okay, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion.
Is, is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, and good night.